Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the development for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you call the -- when the clerk calls a roll, could you please check in as well?
Alderman Collier?
Here.
Alderman Kruger?
Here.
Alderman Zalinski?
Here.
Alderman Grady?
Here.
Alderman Benner?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenick?
Here.
Okay, looks like -- oh, you just have to hit your button, Alderman Taylor.
The plus button?
The plus button that say that you're here.
I'm not going by voice.
I'll do that for you, Al.
Thanks.
Two of us hit abstain rather than here, so.
Abstain for being here.
We'll be okay, though. So the first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. Chief Klon is here this evening to introduce our new fighter fighter, Adam Lemke.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you all are aware, Nina Minassia Fire Rescue's in a state of rapid change, and that change will continue over the next few years, six years or so. Over the past two and a half years, we've added eight new firefighters. These new firefighters have given NMFR a boost of energy that we've not seen in a few years. All-season firefighters have been given a little boost in their step assisting with training, teaching, and mentoring these new firefighters. This change in energy creates a healthy competition amongst all the firefighters that can bring out the best in all of us. Today, I'm honored to you, Mayor, and the council to introduce our newest firefighter, Adam Lemke. Today, Adam will become a very important part of a close-knit family, and everything that he does now will reflect on Nina Minassia Fire Rescue and our cities of Nina and Minassia. So, Adam, going forward, please take into consideration what the effects of actions have on our family and our team, and today you have the opportunity to begin a prosperous career in the fire service. Just a little bit about Adam. He started at Fox Valley Tech back in 2011, and in January of 2013, he was an intern at Nina Minassia Fire Rescue. So he has a little bit of background on our department, which is always good. And then from there, in May, he was hired at the Appleton International Airport, where he has been since he was called this summer to become a firefighter here in Nina Minassia. So, a little bit about Adam. He enjoys hunting and fishing outside of the department, and with him tonight is his fiancee, Brianna. So we welcome him to the Nina Minassia Fire Rescue family. So with that, I think we're going to come forward, and we'll have Clerk Debbie Galiazzi swear you in. So we can head up front.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Adam Lemke?
Aye, Adam Lemke.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty as a firefighter?
To do my duty as a firefighter.
For the cities of Nina and Minassia?
For the cities of Nina and Minassia.
Winnebago and Calumet Counties?
Winnebago and Calumet Counties.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity?
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Minassia with compassion, courage, and integrity?
To serve the citizens of the cities of Nina and Minassia with compassion, courage, and integrity.
And to hold up the laws and constitution of the United States of America?
And to hold up the laws and constitution of the United States of America.
The state of Wisconsin?
The state of Wisconsin.
And the cities of Nina and Minassia to the best of my ability?
And the cities of Nina and Minassia to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
After he signs, we'll have his fiancee Brianna pin his badge on for him.
Did you practice?
We did. We did start practicing.
Congratulations.
We provide the best equipment we can provide for the department for your safety, and you have a very talented staff, and if you follow their training, you will have a very safe career, and you will come home after your shift and enjoy your family. So follow your training and be safe.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks to the City of Minassia, Nina Minassia Fire Rescue, for giving me this opportunity. Excited to serve for a great city and a great department, and thank my fiancee for coming out and supporting me tonight, and the members of the department that came out as well.
Thanks, Adam.
All right. Thanks, Mayor.
We have several new employees starting out. We have another one next week as well, but we also have our new principal planner, Sam Schroeder, here this evening, and David, if you'd like to introduce him. We're going to make you stand up too, Sam.
There we go. All right, thank you. I am very happy to announce that the city has hired Mr. Sam Schroeder for the new -- for the principal planner position within Community Development Department. Last principal planner, Kevin Engelbert, left in the middle of July. Sam came just a week later, so very short timeframe of open position. The principal planner position is a full-time position. It does have considerable responsibilities for planning, organizing, assisting in the management of professional services, of projects, programs, all the technical activities of the department. It's got a lot of responsibility, and Sam is definitely up to that challenge. He is a definite welcome addition to the Minassia team. He is originally from New London, Wisconsin. He received his Bachelor's of Science degree in urban planning, as well as geographic information systems from the University of Wisconsin at Stevens Point. He has worked as a planner and zoning administrator with the city of Marshfield, Wisconsin, for more than the past four years. He has a vast depth of knowledge on the function of municipal government, community development, and the planning profession itself, and I just want to take this opportunity and give you the opportunity to welcome Sam to the Community Development Department and the City of Minassia. I am very confident that he's going to be a substantial asset to the city. He did start a few weeks ago on July 31, and he is here tonight. So there he is.
Okay, moving forward, we also have a report on the TIF districts this evening, and Mr. Buck and Mr. Jacobs are going to take us through a presentation showing us how we're doing on TIFs.
I guess I don't know what their presentation will be like. We have an extremely full agenda this evening, and I think this is way too important to just give us, like, kind of a report this evening, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels about this, but I think it's important that we have a workshop on this. Even if they give, you know, their report this evening, I still think we need to have a workshop. We have a number of new council members, and the TIF has changed over time. We did retire a TIF just recently, and, you know, when you get a lot of this, this small little information, it's very time-consuming for you to look at. I'd like to go into it in much more detail. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I certainly would like to have some additional information on this in the future, a possible workshop.
Why don't we go through the presentations, see what questions still come up, and we can always continue further on that if there are more questions.
I did discuss this with them, and that's kind of what they thought, too.
Sure. No problem. Are you just going to have him advance it? Okay. Okay. Thank you. So annually, starting actually last year, or this year, would be the first annual TID report, so we will report this to the council every year. We also report to the Joint Review Board, and then obviously the state. But to kind of give you all a real brief overview, Minassia currently has 11 active tax increment finance districts, or TIDS as they're called. Two have been retired, one and two. We have nine districts in Winnebago County and two districts in Calumet County, and if you advance that a little bit, there you go. You can kind of see the overall map on the bottom, and I know there, the map is very big and the districts are very small, but we'll get into more detail on each one, but I'm going to try to keep it brief, and we can maybe get into more detail when we get into the workshop. But what we're going to really talk about is the real generalities of the district itself when it was created, when it closes, sort of what some of the major projects were, if it was amended. And then John's going to get a little bit into the financial health of each TID itself, and then also talk about the overall health of our TIDS as a group or as a whole. And I think you'll all be very surprised, and, well, maybe not surprised, but very happy with what you hear, and in the workshop, you can delve into it a little bit deeper. But if you want to advance, please, there you go. So TID 3 is our earliest active TID. It is a blighted area TID. It was created in 1989 to support the redevelopment and public amenities of River Place Office Building on Main Street. So that's the first faith building on the corner of Main and Racine. It is a three-story building, but it also was used for associated site improvements on that corner as well. It was amended in '97, and again in 2001, to allow sharing of its excess increment with both TIDS 1 and 2. Those two, as Alderman Sevenick had mentioned, have both closed. A third amendment was done in 2006. It involved the relocation of River Street to allow Coveris to do an expansion project. It included relocation of utilities and reconstruction of the street, Taiko Street, River Street intersections. It is scheduled to close in 2017, so this year, the end of this year, and it should have a small positive fund balance at closure. And I'll let you.
Sure. We'll share. We'll share. But we have a fund balance. What we did is we put this chart on every single one of the TIFs on every page, so we can kind of hit it nutshell when we get through all of them. But for this one highlighted, the yellow one, we'd have a fund balance of projected about $42,000 at the end of closure. What will happen then is, since there's a balance left over, that will get distributed between the taxing jurisdictions, so the city will get a portion of that, and so will the other taxing jurisdictions, the county, the technical college, and the school district. However, what impact does this TID have on the city tax roll going forward? The share that the city would get to keep would be about $9,400 that would be added annually going forward at the point of a time of closure.
Right, which is the end of this year.
Yes.
So, and when you look at that table, we do have copies of that. I mean, we could hand them out, but probably give them to you at the workshop, but when you look at the screen, you'll see they're all listed. So when we talk about each TID, they'll all be listed on there, and they're all cumulative and aggregated on the bottom. So I'm just going to go into TID number four now, so if you can go down to the next map, Patrick. Thank you. So this is TIF District number four. This was a blighted area TID. It was created in 1997. It is in Winnebago County. It was developed to support the development of Riverview Plaza, which some people call the McClone Building, and commercial development on Third and Racine Streets. So obviously, McClone is a three-story office building, and there were associated site improvements with that as well. Additional development included First National Bank, Fox Cities, or Morton Drug Development on Racine Street. TID 4 was amended in 2002 and 2004. It basically expanded the scope of activities for public infrastructure, primarily on Third Street, but also on Racine and Main Street corridors as well. One notable item that was part of the amendment was assistance for the development of the Headwaters condominium on Broad Street Project. Third amendment was enacted in 2008. It allowed for the potential positive increment sharing from TID 4 to TID 7. No sharing did take place, so it was approved for that, but the sharing was never needed or never done. So this TID is projected to close in 2024. Because no sharing took place, it could be extended to 2028. If closed in 2024, it may see a slight negative fund balance at closure. If extended, there would be a small surplus.
Sure. And then on with this one, Patrick, if you scroll, rolled onto the second half of the page, and here you can kind of see the numbers. At the end of the 2016 report year, it did have a deficit of $563,000, which is the third column from the right, the second column from the right that we're projecting. At the end of the original life of the TIF in 2024 to be, it's still a deficit of $171,647. However, we have the capability with this to ask for the state for an extension for up to four years on it if we need to, and that would put us in a positive position. So right now, if we do nothing with it, and if there's no additional valuation, and if the taxes come in as they're projected right now, we'd be a little short. However, we can apply the state for a four-years extension, and that would be sufficient enough to pay off the $171,000 that would still be out there. And if, at the point this would be closing out, $25,648 would be added to the tax levy. So there again, there is positives for all of these TIFs at the point of closure. It does make an impact on the operational budget of the village once the closure occurs.
Well, and additionally, not just the increase, what we're showing in the far-right-hand column is the increase to the tax base for the city itself.
City only.
That's the city only. So there's also the increase to the school district and the technical college and state and the county. So the other thing with TID 4 is there is the possibility for sharing into TID 4 as well to make that whole if it doesn't get extended or doesn't see additional increment being generated over the rest of its lifespan.
I think Alderman Sevenick has a question.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, actually. The first one was, where would you look to extend? Are you looking at, into other TIFs to?
No, the extension would be just, it's a timeframe extension.
Just the time.
So it allows the life to extend, and then you, that would be, obviously, gather more increment as that is extended. If it was a, became a recipient TIF?
Yeah.
It would be from a donor. That's a healthy TIF.
Right.
In the same county, in Winnebago County.
Okay. That's what I thought you were talking about, but I understand it's the time thing. The second question is, is obviously, it's, this is one that has the grocery store and the theater, and could you maybe address those particular buildings or projects and how that has affected this particular TIP?
Well, sure. Those projects obviously have, buildings have been built and developed, and the value on the properties have gone up, and I don't have the exact numbers with me, but they are inactive, both sites. The grocery store just recently, theater prior. So they are still generating increment. There is no payments going to either of them from either of the TIDS or from the TID. Obviously, they become more active if more improvements happen, and they'll increase in valuation, but as of right now, they are both factored into all the projections.
So you just made a comment there are no dollars going into those particular projects. What are we doing with the grocery store? See, this is one of the things I wanted to talk about in a workshop, is, you know, we had a projection over a certain period of time, there was, there was grant dollars, there was money coming from the city. I want to know what has transpired since their closing. What have we done differently because of that?
With new, with new TIFs?
No, with that particular.
That particular TIF?
Yeah.
Well, it still sits as it was. There was a payment that was.
And I'm talking about the payment.
It was a very small payment that was going to the developer, the property owner, but when the grocery store closed, that payment stops.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing that we should note is that both of those projects are overlaid into other TIFs, so the value in TID 4 is already set. It won't go down further in that one, most likely, but the increment was in TID 10. I'm not sure about the theater, which TIP that was in.
Yeah, that's a good point. Multiple TIFs in our, multiple TIFs in our city overlap each other, so the value gets locked in when that second TIP gets overlapped. I think it was, it is 10.
Both of them?
So it gets locked in at that point. So, and that's correct, Mayor, as far as TID 4 goes, that's not going to devalue any further. So the increment that we're receiving won't be adjusted for those properties.
And I'm going to have to kind of do this a little differently. My screen has froze up here, so I'm going to have to go to Alderman Zalinski next.
Oh, you can go. Oh, I didn't know he had a question. Let's say someone does decide to work out another type of program with the grocery store and looks for incentives in that. Obviously, that could change this. Could it change it in a positive way, especially if they do? Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I mean, if they're going to increase the value within the grocery store?
Right.
That extra increment would obviously only help the TID numbers.
All right. I didn't know if that was locked or not.
No. In TID 4, maybe. TID 10 would probably receive the additional value because it's overlaid on the top.
All right. Thanks, Alex. I guess it's, that was basically my question, but with these estimated valuations, like you see the whatever $171,000 will be down to, is that if relying on what it's at now, so let's say the buildings remain vacant and the money is stuck into it or anything, is that, that's estimated off of that with nothing going into that value?
Correct. These numbers are, this is a 2016 annual report, so what you see projected is that 2016, everything from 2016 forward to closures are basically static.
Flatline, okay.
Flatline. And every year when we do an update, they'll be adjusted, so you'll see how they change with the valuation.
We have, we have two different sets of numbers there. The column that says 2015 increment valuation is based on the fiscal year 2016 year. So those numbers were for where the final report was with actual numbers. The numbers we have for the column to the right of that, which is labeled future tax increment valuation projected, that's based on the numbers we just got on August 15th this year for January 1, 2017. So that valuation of the $2,497,000 is based on what we have locked in already for valuation. It is an increase from $2 million up to $2.5 million. It is an increase in two years. That is the budget number we will use, and that will be based on the taxes collectible for next year budget year in 2018. So that number is locked in, and the valuation has gone up. Commercial property has seen a slight rebound. I don't know what, you know, had affected it two years ago versus now, but there has been some changes statewide in some of the different classes of property that have been beneficial that have, since the Great Recession from a few years ago.
Alderman Collier? Whoops.
So with the TID.
There we go. Okay.
With all the information we're going to have tonight, which we can sum it up, looking at everything, we're in a favorable position, first time in a long time, and it looks like we might be able to have a little more flexibility in a year or two.
Well, I can tell you, when I looked at these numbers, I was very happy, I was very happy to see, you know, the numbers that are coming out. TID 4 is the only one that has a little bit of a negative to it, and that is, as we discussed, is negligible. The only other one you're going to see, and we'll get to it, is TID 11. TID 11 is the Gilbert Site. Obviously, it's empty right now. That's only got potential to go up, and it's got a very long lifespan left. So when I saw all these numbers come out and started digging into it, it put a big smile on my face, and hopefully it does the same with you. I mean, it's, puts us in, we're in a very good position with our TIF districts compared to other communities that I've worked in. I mean, we're in a golden state, and I think John can comment on that as well.
You have 11 TIFs here, and your neighbors to the south, which I will not name, they have six TIF districts, and three of them they have previously declared distressed since prior to October of 2015. You did not declare any TIFs distressed, nor did you need to. The numbers that you see here in front of you as they keep chugging along in the next couple of years are looking only favorable, and they're, these are conservative numbers. We have not projected any additional valuation changes. The state will continue to increase residential, commercial, manufacturing properties going forward, likely in a positive direction, which is contrary to what happened 10 years ago when the recession devalued everything. So everything is coming back and rebounding. So these are probably as low as they're going to go without any changes, and so even with the state, they might incrementally increase a certain class of property. Residential this year went up 3%, so obviously the ones that have a residential impact could go up another 2% or 3% next year and annually going forward. So you will continue to gain ground on some of these TIFs without any new building or anything happening to them. So it's, but this, you're sitting in a very good position here. It's just number four that we might have to look at a couple options, but we have multiple options to look at.
Right, and I think what's important, too, that John had mentioned, was when you look at that far-right column and you look what's going back into the, into the base value for the city, I mean, that's what TIFs are designed to do, is to provide at their closure a positive increase that would not have happened otherwise. And we can see even with some of them that are, even with 4, which could show a negative, it's still got a positive of $25,000 plus a year at closing, continuing forward. I mean, that's exactly what a TIF is supposed to do. And so, again, I guess I'll leave at that. I'll kind of cruise through. I know you wanted to kind of keep it short, so we, let's go to 5.
That was my fault.
Sorry. And in a workshop, we can get much more detail with everything, but, so District 5 to District 5 is an industrial development TID. It was created in 1998 to support the establishment and development of the Midway Business Park. Thank you. It's commercial and industrial corridor, south of Midway Road and east of State Trunk Highway 47. It was amended first in 2002. That changed the boundaries, basically allowing for more infrastructure improvements, especially included the construction of Whitman Drive, London Street, some signage, and some wayfinding and entrances into the, into the park itself. A boundary and project plan amendment took place in 2005. It added almost 50 acres of property to the, to the TID, and that's mainly on the north side of Midway there. And you can kind of guess what that was for. That was for UW Fox Valley campus, and it was creation of student housing. Increment sharing from this TID was pretty substantial. It was done in 2008, 2015, and 16, and it allocated positive increment to TID 7, 8, 13, and 3. So this has been a pretty healthy, I would say, a very healthy TID, and it's been used actively as a donor TID as well. It is scheduled to close in 2021 with a positive fund balance, but again, it still does remain as a donor.
Is there anything else you want me to say on this one? Otherwise, we can move on to the next one.
It can still grow.
Absolutely.
It can. Yep, there are open lots, and there's lots that have yet to be developed that are in private ownership as well. So TID 6, again, is a Winnebago County TID. It's in a It's an, also an industrial development TID. It was created in 98, uh, to support basically Manassas North Side Business Center, uh, promoting office, commercial, and industrial development along Midway Road and 47. It did receive a boundary and plan amendment to facilitate the creation of public parking, some signage, and some street scape improvements. And in preparation of an economic development plan for sale and redevelopment of properties within the TID, and that all happened in 2000. This TID is projected to close in 2021 with a positive balance. TID six is a very good candidate for a donor TID if it needs to, if it needs to be. Or it could also obviously be used for, uh, future developer assistance or other public infrastructure or public improvements. This is a very healthy TID. And I guess I'll leave it at that. And there are open sites yet on this, in this TID boundary, still open for development as well.
And at the time of closure of this TIF, you can see in the far right-hand column that we are anticipating about $160,000 we could add to the tax levy, um, for the city on an annual basis.
Okay, and we can go to TID seven. That's also Winnebago County. We only have, again, the two, um, nine and 12 that are in Calumet. But TID seven, um, is a blighted area TID. It was created in 2003, uh, basically to support the elimination of blighting conditions and continue the revitalization of downtown, our business district in particular. Assistance for the Marina Place apartment complex, the townhomes, uh, along the riverfront, and the parking structure were the primary objectives of the, of the TID itself. There was also, um, surface lot between Main Street and the river, uh, West and Mill Street. So additional projects include enhancements to the Marina, uh, the Riverwalk itself, uh, reconfiguration of parking areas, installation of all the boat hookups that we, that we see used along the, along the river itself in the canal. This one's projected to close in 2030, and it's projected to close with a zero fund balance. It was a recipient and is a recipient of funds from TID five.
And like David said, right now, even though the end of the 2016 report showed that it's in the hole in a deficit position of 512,000, we are projecting with the annual, um, amount of taxes that are collected each year, which goes back to the TIF about a little over 105,000 each year, and with some of the administration and, um, other expenses that are being paid out of it, it will be able to close with the fund balance within that original timeframe without asking for an extension from the state.
And it is, I guess it's just as a general comment, the blighted area TIDs and downtown TIDs are usually the most difficult to, um, to manage and difficult for them to stay healthy. I would be willing to bet, I don't know that, but I'd be willing to bet most of Nina's, um, distressed, uh, TIDs are probably downtown TIDs. Oshkosh had the same, Green Bay has the same. It's just very difficult to redevelop downtown sites. So to see that ours are, are zeroing out and cash flowing pretty good, um, is, is very good sign.
This is the reason why state statute has provided that the max, that the maximum life for blighted TIPS are the longest because of that reason. Uh, the original life is 27 years, and you can go presently, state law allows you an additional three, so you could go up to 30 years for a blighted TIF, whereas a mixed-use TIF, original life is only 20 years with a three-year extension. So what David is saying is exactly right, but state law allows for that because they are the most difficult, uh, to try to redevelop.
All right, we can go to TID eight. TID eight, uh, was created in 2004. It is also a blighted area, uh, TID district. It was, uh, developed primarily to support the Headwater condominium project located on Broad Street. One of the big projects there was also that, that strip along Racine, uh, was acquisition and environmental cleanup of three properties, um, two of which were abandoned service stations and all of the wonderful things that go along with those. Uh, there have been no amendments to this TID district. It is scheduled to close in 2031 with a zero fund balance. It is a recipient of funds from TID five, as I had mentioned earlier, but I think the thing I would really like to point out is we have a pretty good piece of property along Racine, great frontage, a little bit shallow. However, um, when that site comes online, um, and starts generating increment, we should be at a positive, um, fund balance. I mean, it still has quite a few years left in it. Okay. Okay, I'll go to TID nine. TID nine is a Calumet County TID, so this is a little bit, well, same type of concept, but it's just in the different county, different jurisdiction. Uh, it was created in 2004, and this is a mixed-use district TID. Basically, it was, uh, developed to support the development of property on the east side of One Nida Street, south of Midway. There was one amendment to the district that took place in 2006. That included a boundary change, uh, and a provision for development assistance, uh, for Nature's Way Housing Project, and also for a sanitary sewer extension, uh, to Grassy Metal Lane. Um, this one is scheduled to close in 2024 with a, a very positive fund balance. There are still pending projects out there in, in this TID, which is, um, important because we only have a couple of years of spending, so you're going to see this stuff coming up in the CIP and the budget within the next couple of years. But we do have some land assembly that we were interested in doing out in TID nine yet, um, some trail development, and also there's quite a few open properties for development assistance, um, potential.
Alderman, seven?
Has the new, uh, grocery store been part of these numbers? Because I know you said this is 2015, and you've got 2016 numbers. Has that been included in this?
I believe the grocery stores increment has been included in this.
Okay.
The valuation that we had at the, at the beginning of 2015 was 22.8 million, and now the state gave us the number this, uh, just last week of 37. So I would assume that that 15 million is reflected in that number. Yes.
Sure, and what, and it was really great with this one is at closure, again, in 2024, you're looking at about 400,000 a year, uh, being generated for the city from this TID. So, um, and that's, again, assuming a lot of those vacant lots out there are not developed, um, and just kind of stay static the way it is right now. So that, I mean, that is very good.
But you will make, um, see in the CIP budget, if there are any additional expenditures that the staff would like to propose to the City Council for adoption, um, we'll share that information with you because our expenditure time period ends in November of 2019. So we basically have two years to get done what you want done within that boundary area, um, before we would not be able to finance it with TIF.
Okay, and I can go to TID ten. TID ten is kind of a, it, it's a long sneaking TID. It does overlay with some of the other ones, as we had mentioned before, TID four in particular. But it was created in 2006 as a blighted area district, uh, basically to support redevelopment of property along the Takeo and Third Street corridors. And this one is primarily for the movie theater and the grocery store, excuse me, where the assistance came out of ten. To date, there's been one amendment to the district that was just done last year, and it provided a language that the increment could be repurposed or used within a half-mile radius for housing rehab and also for commercial rehab primarily on Takeo Street. If you recall, for, for those that were here at the time, that was only going to take place if there's positive increment. And when you get more into detail in the table there, you'll see the positive increment has not happened yet. That would be coming forward. Then those funds could be used for those other projects. So until that happens, we wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't be doing those expenditures. Uh, it is projected to close in 2033 with a positive fund balance. And some of the projects still that we think to do in this area include possible land acquisition, uh, infrastructure improvements for sure, uh, and potential development assistance as well.
The last year that we have for making expenditures in the district is 2028. So we have at least a good 10-plus years available to us yet for planning additional, um, capital projects and other things that, uh, might be recommended to the council for approval in the future for this district.
Alderman, seven?
Um, also back to, to nine and including 10, um, is, do you, budgets are being put together. Have you put projects in place for 2018?
Yep, they're rolling around. You'll see some of them in there. TIF 11, or TID District 11. This was created in 2007. It was also a blighted area TID. This was the Gilbert Paper Mill site. And it also encompassed a few of the office buildings and also some of the warehouse space out there, but it was primarily focused on the Gilbert site itself. Expenditures were used primarily, uh, for demo of the mill itself, for construction of the new office building, some renovations to an office building and the warehouse that were there. Infrastructure enhancements included the recreational trail that's along the shore right now, the stormwater facility upgrades, and some utility relocations. Upcoming projects include, uh, engineering costs associated with the canal and potential costs, um, for development assistance or development of Gilbert site itself. Very large site. I want to say it's seven and a half acres, uh, might even be more than that. Prime real estate, um, it is in private ownership. Uh, this TID doesn't close until 2034. Uh, it is projected to close with a positive or zero balance, um, and that's assuming development occurs on the Gilbert site, um, you know, in the next 15 years or so. But again, that engineering on the canal, I know you've, you've seen a little bit about that, um, through, uh, Director Tungate, um, so some of that may come through there. And we do expect that, um, there will be some infrastructure costs, uh, with the whole development getting into the Gilbert site itself.
Alderman, Taylor, do you have a question?
Director Buck, why was that peninsula added, the tip of that one peninsula between the two rivers?
Why was it added to the original TID? I believe it had to do with a lot of shoreline restoration, and it wanted to encompass the, uh, the dam as well.
Okay, because that shoreline on the, uh, north side of that peninsula was done to a point, and now the core in the last three years hasn't returned to, and there's some, uh, shoreline erosion going on. And the core, they did a really nice job with, uh, pouring that wall, and, uh, the, the forms that they used had the type of, uh, stone that we had on, on our shore wall, but then they, they got back to a point, and then they stopped.
And they stopped.
So maybe we're going to take a look.
We'll look at that for sure.
And on the numbers you see on this one, um, with the projections that we've got right now, um, this would be the only other TIF, but like David had said, um, it's in a deficit position right now as of the end of 16's report, and without any new increment valuation for the site, it's still, we project are to be developed yet. We would look at, with no additional increment, we'd be about $81,000 short at closure. But at the time, um, we, it could add $28,000 with the existing valuation of the 2.7 million, um, but we still need some more little development over the next, um, number of years out to 2034.
And I am optimistically expecting quite a bit of increment going in on the Gilbert site. I mean, that is a prime, prime site. Okay, I'll go to TID 12. And TID 12, again, is Calumet County. This district was created in 2011 as a mixed-use district, um, supported the development of property near, uh, Highway 10, 114, and Lake Park Road. So you have the Lake Park Square commercial corridor that runs along Lake Park Road itself. The villas, uh, the ponds, uh, and the cottages of Lake Park are all part of this TID. Again, this is a mixed-use TID, um, so you had a lot of, a lot of costs in here for infrastructure, um, land assemblage, um, development assistance, engineering. So those were the primary costs itself. Additional projects that are yet to come would be more infrastructure improvements, such as some recreational trails and walkways, uh, lighting and signage within the development, streetscape enhancements, uh, the finishing of the streets themselves, because they're not fully, um, fully developed yet, um, and the construction of another access point community way that would come off of Lake Park, um, to connect into Georgetown Place or Cristella Drive. You, I don't know if you've seen that in the previous budgets, but if you haven't, you'll see it in the upcoming one for sure. This is projected to close in 2031, uh, again, with a, a very positive, uh, increment. I don't know if you need to add anything to that?
The last year that for expenditures for this, um, project area would be 2026. So we basically have nine years to get the additional infrastructure, sidewalks and trails and whatever else that we want to put in here for this part of the city.
Right, and additionally, there are quite a few commercial sites along Lake Park, uh, for development. That's going to be where you're going to get your biggest bang for your buck, but also there's quite a few, there's over 40 residential lots within the villas as well. Those are coming online a little bit faster than they have in the past. We've been doing eight, I think eight last year. We're up at five or six this year. So every house that goes in just adds to the tax base and, and the increment value. Uh, TID 13 is our last TID. That is a blighted area TID as well. It's probably the one that you're all most familiar with. It's created in 2015. It supported the redevelopment of the hotel site, uh, the bank and the surrounding area, the construction of One Manassas Center, uh, and the Broad Street parking ramp. Ongoing incentives still remain for the ramp itself. At termination of the district itself, the city would assume ownership of the ramp. This is projected to close in 2042 with a very positive fund balance. There was a report, I think, two months ago that we brought forward, or maybe a month ago, um, talked about the valuation of One Manassas Center, that it was much higher, almost $3 million higher than what we projected in the TID plan. That is reflected in the, um, uh, in the values that are coming out of this as well.
And in a nutshell, um, I'll just recap at the very bottom numbers of the grand total. For the column that says 2015 tax increment, this is for our 2016 fiscal year report that we need to comply with the state statute, um, that there was $75 million worth of valuation at that time. Now, fast forward two years, the valuation at the, at beginning of 2017 is 115 million, and that is then resulting in the numbers you see here. So in that second column from the right, you can see that we've kind of gone over that the only one that we really need to kind of watch on is TIF four. That's that one. We have, we have a couple of options, not just one, but we've got a couple of different options of how to handle that one deficit. The one in, uh, for TIF 11 will go away with additional valuation things going forward. And in a nutshell, when you get all of them all closed and back on the tax roll, you're looking at adding to the tax levy of the city only, not this, not, not including the school district, the county, and technical college. 1.2 million annually would be added to the tax levy. So that will make a huge dent, albeit we won't see that all in one year. This will be phased in over time based on the closure date, but you can kind of see TIF three will be closing at the end of this year. That, uh, this will be the last year we'll be able to collect taxes in December of 2017 to apply towards closing out the district and, um, putting it back on the tax roll from a year from now. TIF five and TIF six, they will be closing out in 2021 or sooner. So you've got at least three in the next four years will be added back to the tax roll. And so you're looking at adding between the 9,400 for TIF three, for TIF five and TIF six, 114, 160, you're looking at over $175,000 of new tax levy dollars that would be added back to the tax roll for the city, which will be very helpful for budget year going forward.
Right, and, and the only thing I would like to add is when you look at that 1.2 million at the, uh, at the addition to the tax levy at all, after all TID closures, that's using 2016. Tax rate. Well, and also that it's, that was also the 2016 increment as well, correct?
Yes.
So, um, you know, ideally, that's going to go up. It's going to be higher. And I guess the, the thing I, I just really want to point out as an aside is this is exactly what TIF is supposed to do. So Manassas is using their TIPS exactly as the state has proposed them to, to be used, um, and they're doing, um, in my opinion, they're doing great. And it's a good testament. Oh, yeah, compared to a lot of neighbors. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, and, and we can get into more detail on specifics of each one at a workshop or whatnot, but it's very, very positive, and, um, you guys did a great job with these, these TIDs when they went through.
David and I are very thankful we're, we are not inheriting a nightmare here. We're very thankful for what you have all done over the last number of years. This will make our job and our staff that are sitting behind us much easier. So we want to applaud you and thank you for that.
Alderman, seven?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, after the presentation, it's probably one of the better presentations that I've received. I don't think we need a workshop, no. I think you answered a lot of our questions unless we, you know, have some more questions, but, um, a lot of the questions that I had, you brought it forward. So I appreciate it. Good job.
And if anybody has any questions, you can call John or myself at any time. We'll go over anything you want, and the public as well, so. So, but it's nice to get this report out. I know people have asked for it in the past, and it was great to have it, so.
Alderman Zelensky?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the TIF District 8. With the proposed new landing of the bridge, would that be affected by, in this TIF, for the property 87, would that be received?
Would it be affected? Doc Lawson's property is not in the TID itself.
But the empty lot that was vacated there, is that going to be affected by?
It may be affected a little bit, but right now, that has a zero valuation since it's city-owned, so it's not contributing now at all. So any development on there is going to increase it, but, I mean, it could affect the property value a little bit based on the, if the state needs to take any of it for a sidewalk or whatever as part of the realignment.
So I guess we'll find out in the future.
Yeah, I haven't seen those final plans, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, thanks.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a simple question about philosophies on TIDs. Is it typically to your benefit to run the TID all the way out, or the TIF all the way out until it matures and close it naturally that way, or is there a better benefit to being in a bigger area, closing them out?
Well, that's a-
I've heard philosophies both ways.
That's a personal preference. I mean, if you're in a TID that can still use a lot of development, can use development assistance and infrastructure improvements, it's really good to keep it open. If it can be used as a donor TID, if you have a TID that needs a little bit of assistance, it's great to keep it open. But on the other hand, if you can close it early, those funds go back into all the taxing jurisdictions earlier. So, you know, it's kind of, you have to weigh each one independently. Obviously, if you have a TID that has a lot of open sites, definitely keep it open because that valuation's going to keep going up, in my opinion. If you have some infrastructure needs that really need to be done in that area to help to facilitate private development as well without assistance, that's also very important to keep it open, again, in my opinion. But a lot of people have the opinion that it's nice to get everything back to the taxing jurisdictions, and they all get their funds as soon as possible, so.
Remember that the $115 million valuation that we have so far, we are collecting a $27 tax rate. Including the school district, the technical college, and the school district in addition to the city. So you're either going to collect on that $115 million or each individual tax TIF district, either $27 on the entire amount, we get to keep the full amount, or if it's just the city portion, it'll be on the $10 rate that you presently have. So do we want to collect it on the $10 and help us just for our city levy, or do you want to go and collect the full 27 to help the whole district, or possibly look at a couple other districts that are up there on the board? So there is some philosophy there. My only comment that I know the school district will mention to us, they do not want you to close multiple TIFs probably in one year. By adding all additional valuation will impact their state aid formula, so we have to be very careful. And I would want to include Brian and his team upstairs on third floor in the loop that even giving them a heads-up one or two years in advance of us planning on when we're going to close it out, because if you have us closing it out in another one of the other municipalities adjacent to us that might be closing a TIF the same year we do, could have some detrimental impacts on their state aid formula, which we don't want to hurt them negatively. So we should keep them, if we have like a long-term plan of closing this TIF number out by two years from now, another one three years out, another one five years out, they can kind of talk with their other neighboring municipalities that participate in the school district. And we could do that, that would be the least amount of harm that we could do to them, especially with the state aid formula, that'd be impacted by throwing a whole bunch of valuation on in one year.
I'm good. I think, I don't know, I'm as mixed on it now as what I was before, but at least it sounds like I'm not the only one in the room that is. Thanks.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this document. Definitely share with constituents. It's probably one of the, well, it's very complex, but it's, for the public to understand, it's very difficult at times when you try to explain it to them, and I appreciate this tool, and we'll share with the public. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would like to add as well, so in the front, there's an executive summary, just a one sentence describing what we described. And on the bottom of page two, we have inserted on, the online version has that table inserted. Anyway, the table that you were all looking at inserted on the bottom of all the summaries. So it kind of makes it, like Alderman Sevenek was saying, it gets complicated when you're looking at all the individual tables, and you can see them broken down sometimes, it really helps. So definitely direct anybody to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions about that, we'll move on to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? I turned you off, sorry. Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to receive minutes A through F and communications G through I.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second to accept and place in file minutes A through F and communications G through L. Any discussion? I just was nudged that it was L rather than I. Oops. And once we start a vote, it doesn't allow me to, can you stop it? Okay. Okay, now we can recognize. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just had a question on the Landmarks minutes. I'd like to ask Director Buck a question on this. In the minutes, it's, the committee is talking about the Tejo Street Bridge utilizing the other tower for a sculpture valley art gallery type thing. Could you please explain how the Landmarks Commission got onto the subject? Because the city doesn't own that tower, and the powers and duties of a landmark commission is not to set up art galleries or find tenants for buildings or anything like that. They have specific duties. And is there a reason why they're veering off from what they're supposed to be concentrating on?
Okay. What the Landmarks talked about with the bridge towers, much like they talked about with the other bridge tower, and it is, the towers themselves are historic structures, I guess, to put it that way. And what they're really trying to do when they talk about the bridge towers is education and also tourism, which are both historic, of the historic fashion. So that rather than just the preservation of buildings, their scope is actually much broader with an education base, a tourism base, and they're kind of branching out to think of what they can do to assist in those types of programs. The Bridge Tower 2, Second Bridge Tower, the East Bridge Tower, or is that the Western Bridge Tower, they had talked about in previous years. Chairman Grady wanted to put that on to, just to bring up for discussion again, and that's kind of as far as they went with it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the way it reads, it sounds like he's been in communications with this valley sculptor thing, which makes me a little bit apprehensive to begin with. And it's, it just, I always, it sends red flags up for me when a committee or commission is starting to veer off outside of the scope of what they're actually there to do. And I'm a little bit hesitant on it, but I just, I trust that you would keep a good eye on it. But I just want to let you know, it's sending up red flags to me when they're talking about forming an art gallery and stuff like that instead of concentrating on the preservation and education and stuff like that of the historic structures. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, when we did attendance, there was some confusion, and maybe I have some now about which buttons we're actually supposed to push when we vote for yes or vote for no. Could you just let us all know again?
Well, the issue being that once the clerk opens up the voting, I cannot recognize anyone to speak, and that's why we stopped there. But the plus button is the yes, the minus button is the no, and there's a zero button in the center that is the abstain. And you'll see when they come up on the screen, so when she opens up the voting, you'll see everyone's name up on the screen, and it will change the color of the box in front of your name to show that you have voted. And then, once the clerk opens the vote, it will show how you voted. So it'll be green, yellow, or red at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just a quick question to follow up on Alderman Kruger's question to David. If Landmarks, who, actually, Alderman Kruger's concern is, in my opinion, is legitimate, but whose role would be that, to be looking for somebody to occupy those spaces like that if they weren't doing that? If Landmarks wasn't looking at it, or somebody like that, or if somebody had a proposal for that, who would they speak to, and what would the process be?
I guess they would speak to the mayor, mayor's office, or my office. Again, Landmarks Commission kind of has a broad scope of powers, and education, and tourism, and historic enhancement, even though they don't, they generally don't own any of the buildings they're talking about. I don't think they own anything. But what they're trying to do is promote basically the history of Manasseh, and I think they felt that the tower, especially with the use of the other tower, that it's an underutilized site. I'm not sure where Chairman Grady, how he was contacted, or if he reached out, or what, I'm not sure, by the group that he referenced.
Well, if somebody came to you and said that I have this idea that I think would work good, where would you go with it from that point?
If it was a historic structure, I'd probably go to Landmarks first. Because any use, especially if you're talking with augmenting the structure itself, it would be something that Landmarks would have to look at and weigh in on. I mean, obviously, anything like that, I'm not sure who owns it, but the state owns it. So you'd have to go through the state, you know, for that to be approved. But yeah, I would think that Landmarks or community development, or the mayor's office would be the first stop.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Northeast Tower was a very success, which is now the Tower Museum. And I think it was a success because the mayor at the time created an ad hoc committee, and also Director Radke tapped the state of Wisconsin, and the words are not long, but abbreviated, it's called IST dollars. And there's a small, small amount of money that's put away by the state for projects like this on state highways. So I agree with Alderman Kruger, you know, let's not get out there talking about, as you said, augmenting the structure, putting different doors in and things. I think the idea has to come forward at some point. I'm glad it came forward like this, but if we're really serious about it, I think we should follow the model that we had for the one across the street and piggyback off of that with the state. Thanks.
Sure, if there's any transportation enhancement funds, I'm sure they would be going after those. But yeah, this, I think, was a very preliminary discussion at this point. Maybe it didn't come off that way in the minutes, but I think they may have been trying to update staff on what had happened with discussions in the past.
So when our new Department of Public Works Director gets here, maybe we can talk about those state funds. Thanks.
Sure.
Mayor, are we on communications?
We are still on communications, yes.
Okay. Item K, 2017 equalized valuation. I would just like either department head there to talk about this. It's great news, and we've competed with the other communities in the valley here, and Manasseh's number one as far as our equalized value in Winnebago and Calumet County. And also, there's a milestone here, Mayor. I think we somehow need to recognize that the first time that our evaluation is over a billion dollars. And I think that's a great milestone for the community, and we should somehow mark that with whatever we feel necessary to. So Director Jacobs, do you have any comments? And explain this good news to the community?
Like I said, I mean, David and I both got here, and there's good news all over the place. So, I mean, we're not inheriting some big, big challenges. We're inheriting some wonderful things going forward here. So on the equalized, the total equalized valuation, I think it was on the second page of the packet, I had indicated that the 2017 equalized value with both Winnebago and Calumet County was $1,117,000,000, 040,500, which was a $66 million increase in one year. That's probably unheard of, but we'll take it. We'll take it to the bank all the way.
And that's the first time we crossed the billion-dollar threshold?
On the total equalized, no. Going back already, and I didn't go back further than some of Peggy's numbers were previously, I just picked up some things that she had left for me. From 2009, 2010, 2011, it were all over $1 billion in total then.
Okay, but the non-TIF?
Yes, that is huge.
That's the first time we've crossed the billion.
That would be a correct assumption, that in the non-TIF. I broke it out this way so that you could see what we are working with as staff when we come up and work with the tax rate and the tax levy. That is the number we are looking at. We're not looking at the total value, we're looking at the non-TIF. So you are correct. The $1,543,3600 is a magic new number that is probably a milestone. And with a $39 million increase in valuation, now albeit this does get converted to assessed, so the assessed number might be a little bit lower than that, but for this number to be this much of an increase in one year, this is great news. A 4% increase in one year, even if it's maybe about three and a half when it converts to the assessed numbers, is a huge deal. Yes.
Mayor, do we have that graph available for the public? It's in our packet there.
We do. I do not believe we have access to it, unless Patrick can pull it up. Since we have him here, I bet he can.
It's just such great news, I would like the public to see it.
While he's doing that, John, do you want to kind of go over the equalized values as well as the net new construction and some of the other numbers that you have in here?
Sure. When you compare us, and I cannot take credit for a couple of these graphs, these come from your very own mayor, who jumped ahead of me on trying to come up with something together, so I give him credit. I just kind of tweaked them just a little bit, but they're yours.
Okay. You can take credit.
I'm glad there's a staff collaboration here on this, with Manasseh's numbers being a little over 6% increase.
It's number K.
Yep, and as I mentioned to you before on that page right there, the 6.28% increase, which was $66 million increase between Winnebago and Calumet Counties, this is a huge increase in one year. You can kind of see, you had the recession years there that trickled through in 2010, 2012, 2013, but you have since restored all of that and then added then some since prior to the recession starting, as most communities in the state have done. On the next page, Patrick, you've got the comparison with your neighboring communities here that shows what the percentage growth was in all other communities that are full-service communities, where you've got Appleton slightly lower, Nina about 1% lower, Fox Crossing below 5%, Kakona, Ashash, 4%, and the state average was only 4.5%. So you are almost 2% above the state average, which was 4.5% for 2017. On the three pages after that, I just shared this with you, not that I was going to try to write a whole book on it, but this kind of shows you how the state comes up with valuations, and there's different components in this. It's not only net new construction, but also, as I kind of leavied to, there's an economic change valuation by class of property, so that your residential, commercial, manufacturing do have increases, like for instance, for the entire city, a 4% increase came through for land and improvements for residential, a 2% increase in commercial, but a small reduction in manufacturing came through in the state, does the manufacturing assessment, not the local assessors here. through in the state, does the manufacturing assessment, not the local assessors here. Then, on the next table, right there, thank you, Patrick, that was what Alderman Taylor was talking about, that magic number in the far-left-hand column, non-TIF valuation. The city, this is the first year ever that you hit $1 billion in just the non-TIF valuation. And you can kind of see that you were hovering just a little to mid-900 million, and now you're over $1 billion. With a $39 million increase, 4% increase in 2017, and in the TIF districts, it was $26 million, but there again, 31%. So both of those numbers, I put the arrows there because they're a huge increase in one year. However, as David and I and the mayor were talking, do not expect this every year. We know that there isn't this much amount of growth happening annually out there, but we're nice to see this at this point. And then, at least this locks in that value going forward, we can only add to this kind of increase. On the next slide, I did put the comparison of 2017 versus 2016, so you can kind of see how much of an increase there was in each individual TIF district for the 11 of them that were across the board in the city of Manasha, both which is combined for Winnebago County and for Calumet County. So one thing that we do want to make mention of is that, on the bottom of that page, if you scroll down a little bit, Patrick, the percentage in the far-right-hand column, a year ago, your TIF limit is 12% of your increment value can be in TIF for the entire city, spread between both counties. You were at 8.1% valuation a year ago. Now, in the new number that was released, if you scroll back up a little bit, Patrick, it was 9.9%. So you have gained almost 2% of valuation increase. If we ever get to the point you're over 12%, the state would likely come to you and say, "Okay, you can have no more new TIFs that you can create." So we have to be very watchful of either closing out some of the TIF valuation back onto the tax roll going forward, or not creating any more, or having big, huge bump-ups in some of the existing TIFs, or creating new TIFs. So you will need to stay under the 12% limit in a combination of closures, putting some back valuation back on the tax roll, or watching with the valuation that's coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years that the city would partner with developers forward, or any new tips that could be looming in the next five to 10 years. And then, on the last couple pages, or last page, I believe, I had indicated on there the net, this number percentage is factors into what we can do with the tax levy going forward. It just happens in the middle of the page, I just handwrote in there where last year's number was, for comparison purposes, that the net new construction growth was 1.6%, which allowed the city to be able to increase. And this was not saying it had to do that, but it allowed you the capability of raising the tax levy about $155,000. On the top of that page, the 2.62% is what, because of the huge growth that happened in this calendar year, you could raise the tax levy up $250,000, which would have a minimal impact on the tax rate. But because the growth went up so much, those are things I will share with you over the next couple of weeks going into the budget time. But you're much further ahead of the game a year from now, or now, than you were a year ago. And when you scroll down to the very bottom of the page, the mayor's wonderful chart there does show you how city of Manasha came out with the other growth in the other neighboring communities. With Fox Crossing came the closest, Nina was almost about a half, Kakona, Appleton were about a half, and Oshkosh, much further behind. But the state average was only 1.59%. So with the city of Manasha being almost 1% full ahead of the state, you are doing very well here. And this sets us in a position for some positive discussions that we can have as staff as a budget is presented to you in a couple of months. So it may not be as gloom and doom as maybe the discussions were a year ago, but things look much more favorable, at least it'll be to our benefit to at least have some positive numbers to work with in developing the budget this year.
As you said, this doesn't happen all the time. And in the financial world of the ups and downs, I think we should just take a moment to really honor this moment that the city has got to this billion-dollar mark. And I'd be happy to work with the mayor in sitting down and figuring out some sort of recognition for that. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, now we could take a vote. So as you could see, the square changes to black once it recognizes that you voted. You can see in mind what it would look like if you hadn't voted yet.
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are six items, the minutes to approve from the common council of August 7th, the administration committee recommendations from August 7th for code compliance and enforcement property survey with a friendly approach followed by a hardline approach, the Board of Public Works recommendations from August 7th for the street use application for Manasha High School homecoming parade on October 6th, the change order for Summers Construction on our new street construction, including asphalt trail for province terrace. It's an addition of $10,129.02, a payment to Summers Construction on the same project for $21,081.74, it's payment three in the final, and a payment to MCC, Inc., for our new street construction, reconstruction, and rehabilitation projects on various streets. It's the first payment at $87,395.88. Does anyone wish to have any of the items separated this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Number two, please.
Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, item one, the common council minutes. The minutes don't reflect the points of order that were made. The minutes...
Hold on, we'll have, if you want to separate that, we can separate that?
Sure.
Are there any other items that anyone wishes separated? Seeing none, do we have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move for the consent agenda items of basically the Board of Public Works, three, four, five, and six.
There's a motion, a second. And could we have a roll call vote, please? And hold on just a second until it pops up on the screen. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't give you the... Apparently, it cleared out the first time.
Motion secured on roll call 8-0.
Items separated are item one, the council, common council agenda minutes. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
I'll move for the approval of the common council minutes of 8-7 of 2017.
There's a motion from Alderman Sevenek and a second from Alderman Kruger. Do we have discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, the minutes don't reflect the points of order that were made. The minutes are selective with only my points of order. I would like the clerk to review the tape and make the appropriate changes.
If you wish to change the minutes, we'd need an actual motion to change the minutes as the council desires, so we could table the minutes, I mean, the minutes, and have you bring back the motion for approval?
I would certainly like to give the clerk an opportunity to review those and either don't list the points of order, or list all the points of order that were made in that meeting. I'll make a motion to a table until we get that clarity.
A motion to table would just be a motion to table, and then someone would have to bring it back. If you want to make a motion to postpone to the next meeting, you could do that as well.
That's fine, I'll change that to postpone.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone to the, I'm not sure what the next meeting date is.
September.
September 5th meeting. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Sevenek. Is there, I always forget if there's discussion on postpone. Okay, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, are you ready to?
Well, the problem is that there's one motion already on the floor.
We can just take it written.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're still working out some of the kinks on this system. We're going to have to take this as a roll call vote verbally?
Well, no, we can postpone it, yes, we can take that motion.
Okay, so we can take it on the system? Okay. Okay, so this is a vote on the postponement of approving the minutes, just so everyone's familiar with what we're doing. Before you close that, Debbie, just so everyone knows, you can change your vote until the clerk closes that. So until she closes it, if you think you voted the wrong way, you still can change that here while it's on the fly. Okay.
Motion secured on roll call 7-1.
So item two is the code compliance. Do we have a motion? Oops, I had to wait for a second. You need to clear out of the vote before we can, there we go. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the code compliance and enforcement property survey with a friendly approach followed with hardline approach.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Zalinski, I believe? Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on our conversation two weeks ago in the committee, I'm not convinced that this program will be the best use of our staff time going forward. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can focus on the properties that have been identified as a problem, instead of going out and looking for a new one.
Well, we do focus on the properties that have been identified, so this would be on top of those. I mean, we could not, we would not have to do the property survey program, but it's a nice baseline for us to start with. And I think it really, in my opinion, went forward with the objective that the council has had for several years of trying to do a more comprehensive view of all properties in the city. I know a few years ago, code enforcement officer had focused on sort of our primary corridors coming in, so they had focused on, I believe, Oneida Street, and Appleton, and maybe Racine. And this is sort of, this approach is sort of more holistic, so that properties on interior blocks that may not be visible to everybody, but visible definitely to their neighbors, at least get inspected. It also is nice because it provides, over time, a baseline that we can go back and review, you know, in subsequent years. So I, I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
That's my feeling on it. And again, we do plan to do a pilot this year, still this year, to see exactly how long it takes. If we come up with issues that it's taking way too long, I'll definitely come back before the admin or the council and adjust it. But I've also reached out to an Alderman and to see if we could use one of their districts for pilot. So we'll see where that goes. After approval tonight, I'll go forward a little bit faster.
All right, thank you for that. And I'll be curious to hear an update on how the pilot program works out, and if any adjustments need to be made. And having said that, I think that if this were proposed as part of a more comprehensive program, in which we could be addressing code issues, providing a mechanism to assist homeowners in fixing those things up, if we think that getting them fixed up is really necessary, and a program that would address our housing sector needs, that I would be more inclined to support it at this point.
Alderman Better?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with Alderman Nichols' concerns that we do have a very small staff, and to use them, you know, to directly go out and do something like this can be time-consuming. But when this came forward, I know you have experience with this with your previous employer. And I was just kind of, so I assumed that that outcome was a pretty positive thing, so that was one of the reasons why you brought this. I was wondering if you'd want to share some of your experience with us, with how that worked out for you guys. I see they started, they actually did more than one district. I thought after the first district, they may just say, "Oh, that was too much conflict. I don't think we want to go there." But could you explain to us how it was received and how it worked out?
Sure. And you're referring to Oshkosh where I worked previous. So they had started a similar program in a limited area, and it was not successful. It was a full hardline approach. And that went through, it upset a lot of people. It didn't have the results that were really, what they were really going for. And so they pulled back and did more of a survey approach and a more friendly approach. And again, focusing primarily on property maintenance-type of issues and exterior appearance issues, and not getting heavily focused on every aspect of a property. That has been very successful. What Oshkosh has seen is a lot of praise typically by property owners, but also by landlords. Again, when a neighborhood itself all kind of cleans itself up, it's easier to rent your property, it's nicer to live in your property, it's better to sell your property. And to kind of reflect back on what Alderman Nichols had mentioned before, when they contact staff, there are multiple programs right now that we can utilize to assist with the property owner. We're flushing those out a little bit more with maintenance and repair. So we have our block grant program. I'll be bringing forward a program, a very small-budgeted program that we could potentially utilize, utilizing YouthGo to some extent, and other service providers, including Habitat for Humanity and ADVOCAP. These are all housing service providers that provide assistance to homeowners who can't afford or can't physically do the improvements. And again, a lot of times, those small improvements, cleaning up a yard, painting a house, make a huge difference in a neighborhood. And again, a lot of it is all, is quality of life. Quality of life reflects not only in your personal life, but also in your financial return on your investment. Your home is usually your biggest investment. So it has been successful in other areas. I'm hopeful that it'd be successful here. I definitely wanted to get out in front of the council, because when you start getting calls or complaints that it's happening, I want you to know in advance what's going on. But don't be too surprised if you also get praise as well, that things that may have been never reported, or never felt to be so bad by most people that they were ever reported, are now getting cleaned up. And a lot of those are really simple issues, tires in a yard, or a car that's always parked in the front yard, something really simple, it's easy to fix. And a homeowner or renter may not even know that it's a code violation. So by coming at it from a friendly approach, hopefully, we'll have some success. It gets much, much more difficult when they're very hard code issues. So somebody who can't afford to fix a failing porch, let's say, that's very expensive, those are the cases that are going to take a lot more time, and a lot more staff time to try to get compliance. And of course, we're going to try to utilize every type of agency we can to assist in those scenarios. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it has been successful in Oshkosh, and they have actually went forward to do even more aggressive type housing programs, especially for rental... type housing programs, especially for rental properties. So they have a rental registry, they have interior inspection requirements on rental properties. But they also have gone forward, much larger staff, with doing neighborhood planning. So you do the neighborhood organizing, and the neighborhoods themselves will petition the city to have, you know, in a capital improvement program, if you're doing the street, they'll come in and request, hey, can we get bump outs here? Can we get extra street trees? Or whatnot to increase that quality of life. They do neighborhood park projects. But again, that's all part of empowering a neighborhood. But these surveys are really getting that baseline. You know, what do we have? Where are we sitting right now? And not just chasing complaints that we're being a little bit more proactive. And not that we haven't been proactive, because we have been, but.
You mentioned feedback from landlords as being positive, and typically that's not the case with some of that. And I'm curious where, what that positive feedback was. Was it to get their tenants to do a better job with their own housekeeping around the house, around their property? Or was it the fact that somebody actually may have encouraged them or their competitors to up their game a little bit? Where did all that come from?
Typically from the landlords. You get two kinda attaboys. One is generally, the best thing for landlords is to have a long-term tenant. If a neighborhood is in distress, for whatever reason, property maintenance or whatnot, it's harder to keep a long-term tenant. So you're constantly switching out. There's a lot of cost for a landlord in that. And a neighborhood that instability or the transient nature of tenants is not a good situation generally for the house or the neighborhood, not in all cases, but generally. So a lot of landlords are happy when they start seeing neighborhoods improving because their tenants stay longer. They can also pull in a higher quality of tenant when you're in a neighborhood that looks nicer. And so you get a lot of praise that way. The second item is when you have landlords who may have a lot of properties or be quasi-absentees, so they're not always at the property, they're not monitoring them that often. The survey sometimes becomes an eye for them that they don't typically have. So if a tenant is putting a couch out, you know, on the front lawn, they may not know it's even there. They get a letter from the city saying, you know, there's a couch. They call the tenants, they get rid of the couch. And so, you know, I don't wanna say it's a service, it is a service to the landlord as well, it's a service to all property owners. But we would often get thank yous for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a long overdue program, and it's just great that we have our residential building inspector, our officer, Joe Paulzine, out there. And what I would like to see is more of a, instead of complaint driven, we have so many eyes out there on city employees, police department, fire department, public works. And I would like to see a page or something that they could type on their computers and put up a complaint and say, hey, there's, you know, this is going on at this home or that home. Certainly, this'll impact my district probably more than anybody else's. I know Alderman Better and I, probably get a complaint, somebody's got a dandelion or crabgrass, and I got a complaint that the roughest cave in, in a 150-year-old home. So there's a lot difference in, but I respect breaking this down into smaller bites for every district, I think's a good plan, too. But I would like to see us, maybe we need to, during the winter here, put a little more, I've talked to you about this a few times, updating our codes a little bit better than what we have, and I think there's some work there. And I had mentioned last time, and I think the earlier you can let someone know about a major repair or something, the better off we are. So if we do have a light, a light winter or something from that October till April in there, and staff has some time, I think if we could get out, anytime we get out ahead of it, I know last February, there was, I had sold my mother-in-law's home, and the contractor put a roof on it, and they painted the house in February because we had those four days of sixty-some degrees. And I think first time ever, Manashi, I saw somebody paint the house, or Nina it was, paint the house in February. So, but we'll see how that paint holds up. But I think we need to get away only from the complaint driven and have our city staff help us out with that. I know I see things, I know that everybody else has to be seeing those things too around town. And I appreciate if we can do that on kind of, as a group or as a team to manage our city. Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. As Alderman Nichols, I'm really interested to see how this does turn out and how this does work. And I think it's a positive thing because there have been a lot of complaints. I've received complaints over the last two months on properties next door to other people that they report it, and they're seeing no action on it whatsoever from the city. And just like with the fire department, police department, and other departments, being out there active and having a presence and showing that something's to be done, I think is a really good positive thing to keep up the neighborhoods. And I also do agree with Alderman Nichols that if this does go in the correct direction, to try to expand it a little bit more to actually form, helping, you know, have some sort of help or aid for some of the homes. And we have aid for the historic district and landmarks. They get money for their facades and improve the outside of their houses and, or the buildings, excuse me. And I think it would be a, something to look at in the future if it's feasible to be able to come up with a program on that also. Thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. Just, I don't know, I get an echo over here, but. Thank you. Just to piggyback on what they've been saying, I think this is positive moving forward. It's a good pilot program. There are multiple properties in the past that have slipped through the cracks, and that's not one single person's fault, but this is a good stepping stone to move forward with it. As Alderman Taylor mentioned, some of these districts are different than others, but even new houses get old quick. So I think there's things that can be done even in every single one of our districts. But moving forward with this, I think it's very positive, and I think, don't we already have money set aside for rehabilitation on houses?
Sure, we have a very small set aside from the budget last year. And then we do have a community development block grant program. That is an income qualified program, however, so you you have to be under a certain cap. But there are other programs out there, like I had said, Advacap and Habitat and even Youth Go doing property maintenance assistance. And we'll be sharing that also. A program like this that starts up, when you start gathering information and resources on rehab assistance or property maintenance assistance, that starts to give us a program that we can go forward to groups like the community foundation, private businesses, banks, and see if they're interested in also contributing either, you know, funds are always the best. Contributing funds, but also possibly zero interest or low interest loans that are potential. So you can start building a, sort of a neighborhood revitalization package that's focused on housing. But this is sort of the first step is to kinda get your baseline.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope the best for it.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, if we could have a vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for August 10th through August 17th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of eight ten two thousand seventeen through eight seventeen two thousand seventeen in the amount of three million fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents.
Is there a second? Did you get a second? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Discussion, Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Page one. Buckland Tree Service, I thought that they sold their interests. They're no longer in business.
I'm not aware that they sold their business.
We have, or use the mic?
Unless they're in a new location, they're no longer at the pager highway site. You push the middle button.
And hers looks like it may have disconnected. David, yours works, if you want. It's the last time you had to come to a meeting, apparently, huh?
Yeah, I'm not aware that they sold their business. I mean, the invoices still do say Buckland's.
Topsoil? Yeah, that was the thing. I didn't, you know, we have eight ten, but that's the date of the check. So usually we pay this within thirty days, and I know that they have not, unless it's just a real late bill that came in.
My understanding is they did sell the property, but they did move the business to another location further to the west. That was my understanding.
I just found that interesting because I know they're no longer at that. Because I actually used them. It's a good service.
Okay. Any further discussion on the accounts payable? Seeing no one, if we could have a roll call vote, please? It doesn't like you, Alderman Grady. I see you doing it, but it's not working.
If you push it before I start the vote, it won't register, so you have to wait until your lights start blinking.
Still isn't working? Did you try again, Alderman Taylor?
Let's just reset it.
Last week it did this four or five times, so send it back.
Can you start over or not?
Let James vote first.
Okay, I'm gonna restart it again. So your light should all be blinking.
Doesn't seem to, okay.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero. Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
We don't have any extra ones that have voting on it, but we can have it looked at and make sure that we have one that works. Sure, yeah, we can look at it, that's fine. I just wanted you to know I can't trade one tonight because I don't have one that'll vote. The next item is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the beverage operators license applications for two thousand seventeen to two thousand nineteen licensing period.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? As soon as. Because it's not happy, huh?
I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Are you able to just do a test vote? Not attached to anything or not?
Well, it's gonna show up.
Okay, we'll move on then. Item three is an update on the real estate purchase and sale agreement for four sixty Anup Street. Attorney Captain?
As you're aware, we entered into a real estate purchase and sale agreement for four sixty Anup Street. And over the last year or so, we have been working towards that acquisition through, survey was done, phase one was done, we worked with the developers, or excuse me, with the current owners to put together the phase two. And we did receive on August fourteenth the written results of that environmental review that was done in accordance with the purchase agreement. And we have, I wanted to get this out to you so that you're aware that it's out there. We, if this is considered to be the final environmental review, and we're not gonna be getting anything else from them, it does trigger a response within thirty days. And we have to determine whether we're moving forward on the purchase or not, so I wanted to let you know about that since there's a short timeframe. We did consult with our environmental professionals at Omni Associates, provided them a copy of it. And we are waiting an ability to meet with them and to discuss what their recommendations are. And then we expect to come back to the council. We need to schedule a redevelopment authority meeting as well because that's the group who would be first looking at the environmental review and then providing some input to the common council as to whether or not we should be proceeding with the sale. So that's where we are at right now. Are there any questions that I can answer? Or if there are any questions that you would like answered in relation to the next meeting that we have on this issue, let me know.
Alderman Taylor has a question, I believe?
Does the thirty-day clock start when we get that in our hands, the last environmental inspection?
The thirty days starts upon receipt of the environmental review, and that date was August fourteenth.
Oh, you have the environmental document?
Correct.
Okay, we don't have it?
You do not have it.
So why wasn't that here tonight for us?
I can give you a copy if you would like it. It's about this thick, and I don't think you'll understand a word of it. There were a number of us here that reviewed it, and we have it with the environmental consultant to kinda translate it into English to give us some options on it.
The clock starts on council when we gotta get together, when we gotta act on this. And the longer timetable we have and the more information we have is very important on a project like this.
That's correct, then. Oops, sorry. That's correct, and that's why I had indicated that we had received it and that we provided it immediately to Omni Associates, and that we will be scheduling meetings with the redevelopment authority as soon as we're able to do that. Do we have a date yet? And I'm asking Director Buck.
I have too many. No, we do not have a date for the RDA yet at this time. But we did receive the document, and as you had mentioned, it is about, would you say about two hundred pages? Something about two hundred pages. It's, needs to be summarized by an environmental consultant to really know what to recommend forward. So, but I think, yeah, I, possibly a joint RDA council meeting may be necessary as well.
When does, um, from our consultant, when do we get their interpretation of the document?
When they get a chance to look at it and then we'll have to sit down and talk to them about it, or at least conference call and talk to them about it.
Because, you know, I don't want to put this body back against the wall and something this big. And, you know, we need to be out in front of this, you know, uh, we should have the thirty days when, you know, when it's ready for the council at least two meetings, you know, uh, to, to, to digest this and look at this, you know. So when do you expect, uh, the consultant would have their report?
Well, I suspect they would look at it and we would have something, uh, probably this week yet.
Okay, and then as soon as that comes in?
It's that report and then we also have to discuss it with them because again, the language comes back. It's difficult to understand some of the environmental, uh, lingo. You know, we refer to NR one forty or NR one forty-one and VOCs and MGLs and...
So when you can finally bring it down to our level, you're going to notify us?
Definitely, definitely.
Okay. And the sooner the better on that, you know, if it's in an email or, uh, we gotta pick it up at the police station, that's fine. But, uh, as soon as you put it in our language, let us know.
When we get into something that's understandable, we'll set up that meeting as soon as possible afterwards.
Okay, thanks.
We did ask Todd Drew to take a look at it right when we got it and it was beyond his understanding of the lingo as well, so. But you're more than welcome to a copy of it if you'd like anytime, Alderman Taylor.
Certainly.
Sure, okay. Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you, so is there a specific action that we're supposed to take on this tonight or is this just a discussion item?
No.
Okay.
We just wanted you to be aware that we got the environmental report, that we're having the consultant review it and as they were saying, putting it into more understandable format.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, are the consultants going to be coming to that meeting and addressing us or will we just receive information from staff?
Change the way this is set up?
I would expect that the environmental consultant would be meeting. That obviously would be the person who would be best able to explain what the options are. It appears as if there may be additional testing that's required. That's what we did surmise thus far. And so it may be that we don't even have any, um, um, alternatives as far as, um, you know, what needs to be cleaned up there. If you'll recall, the agreement that we received indicated, or the agreement that we signed, um, with our, our Donnelly indicated that when we received the environmental review, that it was going to also contain, um, a proposal for what remedial action should be taken with regard to the property as well as an estimate of the costs that are associated with that. That part of it is not contained in this environmental review, so that's why I say it may be that our thirty days has not even begun. Because if they're expecting that there's a need for additional testing in the phase two, then certainly they'd be doing that first, um, to determine whether or not there is necessary remedial action to be taken. Since we didn't get anything that indicates that we should be, um, what our alternatives are for remedial action and what the cost is, you know, are, are they stopping there or are they going to actually come up with, with those recommendations? This is all that we received right now was that environmental review and since it's not understandable to the staff that we have here, we had to, um, go out to the environmental consultant that we have to help explain it. So that's the point that we're at right now.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we get this document in our language, uh, the environmental consultant, uh, I would like to have a contact number on there who we could ask questions to since we're working on such a condensed, uh, timeframe. And, uh, uh, who sets this timeframe of thirty days?
That is in the agreement that was approved by the common council.
Okay. I know, uh, Aaron Donnelly's a former Bonta company, great company to work with and, um, I think when we have these issues of something of this magnitude, we really need to, um, look at a timeframe that accommodates everybody, especially with the vacation season here and, um, I don't want this, uh, to end up like another steam plant by trying to fast track something.
Seeing no other discussion, we can move on to item four. There is no action required on that at that point. It is the seatbelt and child safety seat traffic enforcement grant. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, chief, uh, it says, uh, I think it was twenty-five percent, uh, that the city has to put in, what it, how much is twenty-five percent?
Depends on how much we actually work the grant. Uh, this year should be about fifteen thousand dollars, it'll be about twenty-five percent of that. Uh, so about four grand. We don't actually put that money in because we, easiest way to do it is we treat, we, we track our other track of traffic enforcement that we regularly do on patrol duties. That and the mileage that we put on the cars during the traffic grant. We use those numbers to, uh, illustrate to DOT that we are, uh, a party to doing traffic enforcement itself outside of the grant. So it's not that we incur any cost on the city's side of it for doing the traffic enforcement, we just log the stuff that we're already doing.
Okay, I just saw it here where it says it will not impact the budget, but I was just wondering, where the twenty-five percent? But we're not putting dollars up?
Exactly, it, it's a soft match.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on this item? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve and accept the sidewalk project, or the seatbelt and child safety seat traffic enforcement grant, two thousand seventeen through eighteen.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, was that? I haven't been doing for the second, no.
It's for the public.
I, I can't grab them that quick typically, so.
Okay.
Did you have other discussion, James, or did you just? Okay. Any further discussion? Are you ready? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item five is this, is the sidewalk project at Main and Taco, Attorney Captain?
I provided a memo and, um, this item is on the agenda just to inform you that on August ninth, at Main and Taco, on the sidewalk project, uh, city crews uncovered a vault. And the work did expose a portion of the basement area of that building at One Main Street. And that is the area underneath, uh, what's commonly referred to as the Brin Building, uh, the old bowling alley that has not been used, but it, uh, did expose that area. We immediately stopped, um, the crews from working on that because there was a concern they had broke through, obviously, at the, um, the, through the ceiling area. And, um, that created an emergency situation where we needed to have an environmental, uh, structure, or excuse me, a structural engineer come out, um, just to check for, you know, if it, how fast did something need to be done uh, with regard to this project. And so, um, somebody did come out, um, the person indicated that obviously something needs to be done quickly, but it did not need to be done that day or, or the next day. So where we are at right now is that structural engineer is putting together what some of the options could be to, um, close off that vaulted area. One of the other things that we did was, uh, we did some research, found a couple of revocable occupancy permits that were issued in nineteen ninety related to that One Main Street building. One of them has to do with something that is, what's it called again?
Said it was a parapet?
Parapet, thank you. I just, I had to look it up in the dictionary, I wasn't familiar with, with that word. And so that was, um, one of the revocable occupancy permits and the other one is for the vault area. That, um, vacant, uh, space that is encroaching onto the city right of way. Uh, there is a revocable occupancy permit that was located for that encroachment. Um, what the permit indicates is that, um, there's a, a couple of, of provisions in there and for the most part, it indicates that the city can provide notice to the owner to, um, remove the encroachment. Obviously, this is, um, quite a large vaulted area and notice is pretty darn short here since it's open and we, we have to do something. So we're hoping, I did contact the owner, I understand that he's in the audience here. We, um, are hoping to come up with some options, uh, talk to the owner and, and see what it is that we can come up with. There is a smaller area, a room, that it doesn't appear as if it will be too difficult to fill in with, um, some kind of stone or something. Um, the other part, however, you know, goes into the whole basement area of, of the building and is quite large. It certainly would not be filled in. There would have to be some, something else that would need to be constructed, a wall or something to contain then, perhaps some stone or something to fill in. But right now, um, we're waiting to hear back from that structural engineer. I did talk with, um, uh, Mr. Corey Gordon today, uh, and to see if there were any updates and we don't have any updates on, on that thus far. So that's where we're at and you can expect that something else will be coming back before the council.
Alderman Taylor?
Attorney Captain, could you explain a little bit the revocable occupancy permit dated March twenty-second, nineteen ninety?
Explain what it is, do you mean?
Yes, yes, it's stated here, yes.
It is, um, something that was granted by the common council allowing the owner of the encroachment, which this would be the basement area of the building at One Main Street to, um, continue to exist in the right of way or within the right of way.
Okay, and, uh, knowing that we have that document, did we, did we check that before we put the sidewalks in or did we check our maps to see if that was located below it? I know it was there, but, uh, did the city, uh...
The city crews that were working on that project, um, did not know that it existed? I mean, obviously, because they broke through it.
With the Digger hotline, went that, showed up on the Diggers hotline, they have all that stuff that's listed. And I know if we put, uh, sidewalks in there, I think it was nineteen ninety-two, uh, with the reconstruction of Main Street and changing that intersection there. So what the Diggers hotline have exposed that?
No.
Okay, uh, for the safety of our employees is that we can, uh, you know, when you're working in the downtown area, there's many discoveries that, uh, are underneath sidewalks, uh, part of the hotel was a sidewalk, uh, some other stores that used to have the steel gates open and, uh, they would have a form of an elevator that would, um, take the truck into the lane. The steam line, uh, there was discovery of many, uh, little canals, uh, that were tied into that, that project there too. So to protect our employees of, uh, and also the landowners, the building owners of the, of something like this, you know, we could, could have been catastrophic or loss of life. So how, how do we protect, uh, do we check our maps when we're in the downtown or what, what do we need to do?
That's correct, it could have been catastrophic and if you have information, that would be very helpful for staff to know about. The staff that was working on the project obviously was not here back in nineteen ninety or they would have probably realized it. And it may be that some of the folks that perhaps know about it are, uh, are gone now and so...
But don't we have, uh, we have all sorts of maps and information, uh, when we're in the downtown area, uh, aren't we checking that?
I don't know what maps you're referring to, I guess.
Well, for instance, uh, they couldn't find a water line to my house, my house was built in nineteen twenty-four. Uh, they went back and, uh, they said the line was here, it wasn't. They went back and they got some older maps and, uh, found out that, uh, my service line was over here. So, uh, certainly when things are built and constructed, there's, there's maps out there throughout the city.
There, and if you're referring to laterals, I know that the city, um, does not mark laterals for that very reason, that there are many, many that were put in at times when they did not have good records.
Again, I'm looking at the safety of our employees, you're seeing that you don't know of any type of maps, uh, any type of, uh, construction maps or, or what's on the underground below that besides, uh, uh, Diggers hotline.
No, I said Diggers hotline would not show this particular vault.
Okay. But I, I guess what I, I would like you to find out is if there, if we do have maps and if we do have, uh, some research that could better help our crews not to get hurt or hurt somebody, uh, that's what my focus is on this.
Did you have anything else, Alderman Taylor?
I, I can't hear you, Mayor.
But did you, did you have anything else, your light's still on?
Yeah, I just was, uh, looking for a response from the attorney that, can we find out if we do have this type of, uh, engineering documents in the city that when we're in the downtown or industrial areas, we can, we can go through those and look at it before we start digging.
I don't think that we know of any maps like that, we did search for some of those things. There are some revocable occupancy permits that, uh, we did find, I don't believe we found any others that were for vaults. We do know, uh, we did know of a vault over at the Congregational Church or, uh, Cornerstone Church that was also found this summer that we filled, um, after that. So we do want to go through the downtown and look for more of the... So we do want to go through the downtown and look for more of these vaults. It's, they're very common.
There's one in front of, uh, Club Liquor on Racine Street, where the entrances go up to the apartments there. There was, uh, two huge steel doors there, so park that down, you can look into that. Where the hotel there was, all I'm looking at is the safety...
Sure.
...of our employees and, uh, the safety for the residents out there.
I think we're all looking for the same thing.
Is the attorney, is the, uh, the owner notified of the situation?
Yes.
He, he is in the audience, and yes, he...
I was not notified.
You, you were notified that...
He was not notified before the construction, yes.
Uh, would you, would you like to say anything? Step up. Oh, there's no mic up there.
I'll just ask for unanimous consent to hear from, uh, the owner of One Takele.
Hold on, is, is there any objection at this point? Saying none? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Zeismar.
Okay, how come I wasn't notified? And if you knew there was vaults under there in, what, 91, 90 or 92, how come you didn't, when you dug this time?
I don't have an answer for that right now. We wouldn't notify people doing sidewalk projects typically, because it's in the city...
Okay, then I'll refer to my second question. If you knew there was back in 90 or whenever you said they were, that, you knew there was vaults under there then, why didn't you know it when you dug a, a week ago?
I, did you have a, I don't have an answer for that question.
Could you give, uh, your name for the record?
Robert Zeismar.
Okay. And address is One Takele. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, Bob.
Mayor, maybe you can have Mr. Zeismar's questions answered, then?
Go ahead.
Um, will I be notified, um, on what they're going to do to do the repairs? And will I be responsible for any of the cost of the repairs?
You will be notified once we find out what the engineer recommends, and we'll sit down with you and talk to you about what the recommendations are. I can't answer the question on who will be responsible, responsible for the repairs at this point, though. Could you, want to also comment, Attorney Captain?
Sure.
Hold on, maybe? There you go.
And I did already, um, Mr. Zeismar, have this conversation with you, and I did indicate that according to that, um, revocable occupancy permit, it is a temporary permit, just like all of those types of permits, and the owner is the one who is responsible for, um, closing up a vault or removing whatever obstacle it is that is in the way. That, that's what the permit indicates.
I, I cut you off, James, so the attorney couldn't speak.
And there are provisions in there. I did send you, I think I had asked you if you had, um, copies of them handy, and you had indicated no, so I did forward, um, copies, uh, to your email of both of those permits.
I didn't see them on my, on my email yet today, so I don't know if I didn't get it, or you're gonna have to send them snail mail, I guess.
Okay.
Um, what does temporary mean? You didn't answer my question on that. What does that mean, temporary?
It means that it just lasts as long as the city indicates that you can keep it there, and that at some point you would be required to close it up. It could be right now, it could be, um, two weeks from now, it could be a year from now.
So when...
Generally, what happens with those types of permits, I know, as an example, in the city of Milwaukee, um, they do have them if you have a sign that's going over, um, uh, onto the right-of-way, and there's an annual fee that you pay to have something in the right-of-way. And I noticed that the city of Manasha does not do that, but that might be a way to keep, um, better track of them.
So when the building was built, uh, 89 years ago, I assumed the city of Manasha gave them a building permit. That building permit's temporary also? Is that the case? That you can revoke that building permit for that square footage anytime you wish?
I don't know anything, um, as it relates to how long that building's been there, or what the circumstances were of, um, granting that revocable occupancy permit. Um, I think the project that was referenced in 1990, and I believe that you were the owner, well, you were the owner at that time, um, that you would have been aware that it was there, too.
But you didn't. But the city of Manasha didn't know that it was there. So what you broke into this last week, you didn't know it was there, apparently.
The, um, the city crews, that's correct, did not know that it was there.
But yet you did back in 1990. You accepted, all these years, you accepted, uh, taxes on that square footage? I don't understand that. Why, how you can change, if it was okay back then, how come it's not okay today? It doesn't, it doesn't seem, doesn't seem fair.
The, these types of permits are usually used for things like signs and things that would hang over the right-of-way. They're not typically used for things underneath the right-of-way, from what I've seen. They can be, but, um, it was very much unknown to all of us here. 1990, yes, someone apparently found out about it, but we didn't know when the crews went out there now. But we, we will talk to you when we get a estimate from the engineer, and we'll hopefully be able to come to some sort of resolution at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Zeismar has been, uh, his, is notified of his statutory rights?
As far as...
About the situation here.
He was notified that there was a revocable occupancy permit and that we had an issue with that, and I think that's as far as we went, correct? Because we haven't determined what the best resolution would be at that point.
Uh, we all know with insurance claims, that, uh, if the roof falls off your house, you just can't leave it open for the next period of time till something else happens. You have to take responsibility. Have we taken responsibility there and, and shore this up, so if we had a, a rain event, that, uh, there's no further damage done to, uh, this building?
We did consult with an engineer, was it the next day? To make sure that there'd be no structural damage to the building, yes.
I'm talking, let's see, you have that open, it's on the sidewalk, uh...
I'm not sure what they did beyond that.
Can you have a flood in there? Can it rain and have a flood inside this building now? Or is that prevent, is there some, uh, stopgap there?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. I, I appreciate if you look into that and let me know.
Sure.
Because you, you have to prevent further damage, I think, from happening.
So I don't think we need any action on that, correct?
No.
So there's no action needed on that? The next item is the Village of Harrison annexation in the Waverly Sanitary District. Attorney Captain, would you like to? Unfortunately, I have to recognize you, and it doesn't, there we go.
There we go. I provided a memo with regard to the Village of Harrison Annexation and Waverly Sanitary District. You may recall that at the last meeting, I did provide you an update about a petition for annexation, a greater than 50% annexation, that was approved by the Village of Harrison, and what it does, basically, is take in all of the rest of the Town of Harrison, with the exception of a piece of a parcel that is owned by the city of Manasha, into the village. And so the only thing that's left in the town is that it's not even a full parcel, it's a portion of a parcel. Director Buck did contact the Department of Administration to ask, you know, what happens in cases like this, and the response was to the effect, hmm, we're not, we don't know, because this has not happened before. Um, my question to you, uh, we do have 90 days within which to potentially initiate a challenge. Um, that's the statute of limitation, so to speak, on the adoption of an annexation ordinance. You will recall that we did, uh, initiate, um, two other challenges to annexation ordinances that the Village of Harrison adopted in 2016, uh, 15 and 16, I believe they were. And these, all of these annexations are areas that were described in a boundary agreement that we had with the Town of Harrison as the city of Manasha's growth area. And for, um, since 1999, I believe it was, we have been abiding by the boundary agreement and did not go and annex past a, a certain point, uh, east of LP, that is. And so my question is, what is the desire of the common council? Do you wish to attempt to challenge this annexation as well, or not?
Alderman Sevenik?
I'd like, especially after we received the report from the state that, uh, I think we should challenge.
Did, did you want to make a motion to that effect, Stan, or...
That'll be my motion.
Okay.
Second.
So there's a motion, a second, and I should probably find out what the clerk thinks the motion is.
By Alderman Sevenik, I'd probably just challenge.
Whoops.
Or you want me to?
Just, just read back the motion, just so that we all understand what the motion was.
Moved by Alderman Sevenik, second by Alderman Collier to challenge the Village of Harrison Annexation.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry...
Whoops, I'm sorry, I just cut you off. Let's turn you back on.
Did you want Waverly Sanitary included in that?
Separately.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
I'm sorry, um, what I just got out of that is that we're going to take up the Village of Harrison Annexation and the Waverly Sanitary District on two separate...
Motions, yes.
Okay. All right, um, I appreciate that motion, thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, just for the record, then, the, the two prior challenges that we had, they were unsuccessful, correct?
We, um, they were unsuccessful. We did not have standing, is what the court indicated. They were a different type of annexation. They were unanimous annexations. This one is a greater than 50%.
So it's still anybody's guess on how this would even turn out, then?
And the circumstances, uh, perhaps are different, um, in the interests of justice to just leave a parcel hanging there with, I mean, there's no electors, no one lives in it, it's not even a full parcel, that, you know, that, that would be the argument to the court.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
You were a little too late, Alex. I was gonna pick you, and I already had hit Stan.
You know, I want to look back on history. I've been on this council many years, and we were pushed often by the media that we need to consolidate, work together, so that we can keep the tax rates low. We shouldn't be doubling our services. And in the spirit of that, communities like Manasha and Appleton worked out boundary agreements. And I am hurt and puzzled by the fact that, we're talking the same group of people here, individuals, that have violated those rules, but think they've outsmarted you because they're using a different term. But in reality, you're the same entity. If you can sleep at night with your, that's fine. But I did it in the spirit of cooperation when I voted for boundary agreements, and I'm sorry, but this ended up making me a little more cynical. I will be a little less cooperative in the future when it comes to these types of issues, especially when it comes to intermunicipality agreements. Because when you do the right thing, you feel you did the right thing and cooperated, it backfires on you. And I believe in the spirit of this annexation completely violates that boundary agreement. And yes, there might be some that are concerned about winning or losing, but sometimes you have to base your decision on the principle of the matter, and that's why I would ask that all my colleagues vote for this.
Alderman Zelonsky?
Thank you. Um, what's the fiscal impact on something like this? Or is there any kind of a number we can have for this? Like, I see we've gone through it two, twice before. How much did that cost us in the past?
Attorney Captain?
There are expenses, obviously, associated with filing a lawsuit, with serving it. It would be, um, me that would be filing it, so it would be part of staff time that is used to file the lawsuit. Generally, there is not, um, discovery that's involved, which a lot of times expenses can get pretty high, if you have to hire experts, if you have to do depositions and things like that. And we have not had to do that in these particular cases, because they're really issues of law. So...
So it's a, not a solid number, that could be?
It's not a solid number, but it would be, you know, generally, a few thousand at the most.
I just, I agree with Alderman Sevenik that this is terrible that they're going against their agreements and everything, but I think we're just going down the same road we did already twice, and I think we're wasting our time with it, and it's our growth area, but I don't think what we're gonna say to him is gonna change it. I hope for the best.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I struggled on this right up to the drive here, for the exact same reasons that Alderman Sevenik and Alderman Zelonsky just articulated. Because at some point, you know, you stop beating your head against the wall just so it feels good, you know, but, um, but also, at, at what point do you just say you're gonna lay down and, and let yourself get run over on those agreements? And, and there's something else that goes with this, and I don't know how much they tie to each other, but this is Waverly Sanitary District, and there's a lot there as well. And I think that, you know, the way the sanitary district is, and the way the statutes are written, and the way that that's being done, and I apologize if I'm off topic, but it is on the same document, that you just don't, you can't just lay down and let people run over you like that, and you have to challenge it. And, um, you know, these folks are my neighbors. This is a district, this is in the district that I represent. And, um, and I've gone to these meetings, and I've seen the disposition of the folks that, that are doing what they're doing, and, in my opinion, being disrespectful to the city of Manasha. And, uh, I think this has a little bit different set of dynamics to it than what we've had before, and I think it's, it's worth pursuing, at least to a point of seeing if it'd be heard, you know, and, and where we go from there. You know, we may make a different decision... You know, we may make a different decision if all of a sudden we decide we have to hire outside counsel or something and take it onto a larger court or something like that. But I think we cross that bridge when we get there. At this point, I think we put the challenge out there and, and see where we go. It's my opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in good faith, we make these boundary agreements and with our neighbors and respect to them that these agreements are worked out together and we become a good, good neighbor to each other. You know, they, they brag about their, their low property taxes and they court potential homeowners and businesses to, to their village. And, you know, it, it does come at a bigger price for our cities to provide services and, and full-time services to the people of our community. And the village doesn't have that. And it, it, their taxes are lower because they don't provide those services. But, you know, just this winter, they called upon us to save three of their kids out on an ice floe by High Cliff with our fire department. We instantly answered the call. We went and saved their children out there. And we've asked them, when I was on the fire commission, the commission asked them if they would participate in our ice rescue and, and, and our water rescue programs. And they said no. And, but yet they probably think that we're gonna come and answer every one of their calls or knock down a fire or something, or our police department might go out there. And, you know, they, they can't have it both ways. They want to beat us up on this end, but then they want to be, well, please come and help us and save somebody's life, which we will, which we do. And, but it all comes down to, they don't want to participate with us, but then they want our help. And somehow, I don't think you can have it both ways. And that's not being a, that's not being a good neighbor.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor. Could we? Yep.
So should we?
Yours doesn't work. There you go.
Motion carried on roll call seven, one.
And then part two is the Waverly Sanitary District. Go ahead.
With the annexation that occurred, the Waverly Sanitary District, which was a town sanitary district, according to statutes, you have to have a town in existence in order for that town sanitary district to be there. Director Buck and I did drive out to meet with the Harrison Village Administrator to talk about a number of, of different items, including Waverly Sanitary District. And what the village expects to do is just to continue to provide service to City of Manasha residents, which by statute they're required to since they were providing sanitary sewer and water services to that various residents of ours. They must continue it, so they can't on their own decide not to. But they do, and just expect to change it and to take over the sanitary district and operate it, have the village operate it. And so the question, I guess I'm looking for some direction on, is what does the common council desire as it relates to Waverly Sanitary District? The question's about, and I suppose the mayor probably needs to chime in here, you know, is it a good thing or a bad thing? Or, you know, what are the ramifications of that? That really isn't something I can answer. I, I don't really know about the provision of sanitary sewer and, and water. So we would have to obviously look into whether or not that is something that we want to extend service to our own residents and how do we go about doing that? Or do we maintain the status quo? And I will remind you that we have kind of the same thing on the other side with regard to.
Village of Fox Crossing.
Fox Crossing, correct, which has that sanitary district. And I don't know exactly how the numbers compare, but I know that I just did request the numbers from Waverly Sanitary District as far as how many patrons are, are being served. And it is, there are more than 50% now that that annexation occurred that are in the Village of Harrison compared to the city of Manasha. And then there's just a small number that is in the city of Appleton.
So I, I think there's two things to look at. Do we want to provide service to that area? We do have capacity in our water utility. We do have, did do some studies on whether we could separate the two systems. We do not know what it would cost, how that would all work. We do also know that we have about $150,000 levy every year that goes to Waverly Sanitary District that our residents pay. And that provides, from what I was told, the upkeep and maintenance of the lift stations, which I, it's my belief that that's helping them expand the system further east. The big question is what would it cost to separate those two systems if we did want to provide service to our own residents? And what we're asking, I guess, tonight is do we want to study the potential of that, providing service to our own residents? And come back with some more information to the council as to what the costs and benefits are to doing that? Looks like Alderman Benner would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Absolutely, I think we need to do this. And I can tell you that the city of Manasha provides the services for a lot less money, I think, than what Waverly does. And personally, I'd like, I, if I was gonna pick up the phone to call anybody for anything with my service, I'd rather talk to the city that, that I send my tax dollars to than to the neighboring village. I think one of the bigger challenges we're going to have is that we're in a particularly sanitary district. And I don't know that that can be, how that would be changed or how it could be changed because I think that goes through the PSC. And I think that's gonna be probably one of our bigger challenges. It's my understanding, we've talked about this in the past, that the piping is in place for us to do that. It's my understanding. But I don't know. So I would like to see it, see the city continue to pursue what our options are with it and to see if we can do this. I feel very strongly about it. And I'm not complaining about the service that's been provided by Waverly Sanitary District. I don't think it's been a bad service. But I can tell you that when I moved from the east side of Oneida Street to the, I mean, from the west side of Oneida Street to the east side, my utility bills went up dramatically. And when we went to Manasha Utilities, I was really delighted because that was a big part of the, of its savings where it was We Energies at the time. When I moved out there and I did notice a huge difference in our, in my water and sanitary as well. And I certainly, I'd like to see us just be a city and have everything within our boundaries captured by our own utilities and, and provide the same thing that the folks get on the west side of Oneida Street to the folks on the east side of Oneida Street. So I certainly would be in favor and I'd be, I'd be willing to make a motion for the city to continue to pursue, pursue this option.
There's a motion, a second. It was Alderman Taylor to pursue, how do we want to say this? Pursue studying the city providing sanitary and water service east of Oneida? Is that?
To the Waverly?
Or to the Waverly Sanitary District area? Providing water and sewer to the Waverly? Okay.
Should we study the city provide?
Water and, water and sanitary service in the Waverly Sanitary District in the city of Manasha. Does that work?
It, it's my recollection that when we had discussions with the Director Radke, our former Public Works Director, that there would be a need for some monitoring, et cetera. Because the way that the system was, is set up, the properties that are along the lakefront west of LP would still be, I mean, we would be serving them then. We would have to serve them or, or else there would be something dramatic that would have to be done or expensive that would have to be done in order to cut that, that portion off. And then, of course, because, well, now there's such an intermingling with the boundaries between the Village of Harrison and the city of Manasha in that whole area, there, there would be a requirement that we would have to provide services then to Harrison residents that are in that area. Because the cutoff would, would be LP, as I understood it.
Yes. Alderman, Alderman Zavneck?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I learned in my studies of political science and public administration is that there are many units of government that most people don't even know exist. And sanitary districts are one of those units of government. The situation here, though, is unfair because we have had, I should say, more people using that particular service with no representation. And that's why I will also agree that I think that, other than the cost issue, representation is important too. We built this infrastructure, the city of Manasha, over time, over 100 years, getting to be able to develop out in the, the areas to the west and to the north of us. And then this all happens to us. So I would encourage everybody to support this issue also. I think it would be fair to those that we represent, that we provide them the best services, and that's what we've always done up here.
Seeing no other discussion? Sure. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I agree with the need to find out more information to see what it would take to provide service to City of Manasha residents. Perhaps I'm misunderstanding, is there also a question before us as to whether or not to challenge the action of the village taking over the sanitary district as well?
At this point, I think it's best that we study what the impacts are before we move forward on challenging. And I don't think that the village has taken action to dissolve the sanitary district at this point. So I don't know that we would necessarily have anything to challenge at this point But that would probably be the next meeting that we would, we could discuss that as well.
It might have been helpful to have in the packet the agreement between the city and Waverly Sanitary District. As I recall, it was a town sanitary district?
Yes.
And there's one parcel left in the town. There are bylaws that determine the governance of the district?
Unfortunately, the, the town detached the one remaining partial parcel from the sanitary district about six months ago, somewhere in the, sometime this year. So there are no parcels that are within the town sanitary district that are in the town at this point.
Clever.
Yes.
My next question is, is there a way for us to be proactive then in the event that an attempt were made to dissolve the district instead of our constant reactiveness to what others are doing?
I think knowing what our options are, that's what we, we need to study right now. Can we separate those systems? What would those costs be? And is that best for our residents is probably the best way to go at this point. And then we can make that decision, do we want to do that? Or what, what other things are there possibly for us to do if we do want to move forward?
So what would we be looking at for a timetable on this sort of study?
As fast as possible. So I'm not sure what that means, a month? Something to that effect at the most? So.
Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you. Is Sherwood, isn't Sherwood fed from the Waverly Sanitary District?
No, Sherwood has their own sanitary district.
They do? So there's no other townships fed from this or anything that we're aware of?
Part of Harrison is also in the Darboi Sanitary District. So Waverly serves Appleton, Manasha, and Harrison.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item seven is the amendment to the listing agreement with Newman Grubb-Feffery for 901 Airport Road. Do we have? Did you want to speak to it? Can't, you went on and off. There we go.
Okay, there we are. Okay, when the fire station at 901 Airport Road was removed, I believe 2012 or 2013, the city listed the, the, about a third of an acre parcel with Newman Grubb-Feffery, primarily because they own about one, or they are listing agents for about 1.6 acres of property directly south, adjacent to the south. So some of the terms that listing agreement, well, the asking price was 112,000, but Newman Grubb-Feffery agreed to no commission for their brokers. There would only be a 4% commission for outside brokers. And within 18 months of closure, the purchaser would begin, would begin construction and completion with one year after construction begins. So the city at that time in 2013 felt that was a good arrangement. It made about a two-acre parcel with much, much more frontage. And a deal frankly that you're not gonna get from any, generally from any other real estate listing agent. So that was the original agreement in 2013. It was renewed in 14, 15, and 16. We've come up to the date now in 17 where this is about to expire. And what we're asking council to now is extend that from September of 2017 to September of 2018 with the primary reason because of the economy of having them both sold together as one option and also that a commission is not being charged.
Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you. The property that lies south of that, is that currently, I see what it looks like at this point, are they paying stormwater fees on that? see what it looks like at this point, are they paying stormwater fees on that? Because I think that affects our property value quite a bit, seeing that our nice landscape property, then you see that and it's.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they're paying stormwater fees. I do see that the foundations are still there in the ground while our property has been cleared completely.
Could I get some information back on that to see if maybe we can go about something with that to make them maybe fix up their section of the property or make them pay?
They don't own the property, they're just listing it.
No, I know, I know, not them, I'm talking about the owners.
Well, I can always contact the owners and ask.
Yeah. See what they're, they're paying stormwater fees and see if we can do something in the future with that.
Alderman Kruger?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Out of the last five years that they have had this property listed, has there been any offers below what we were asking or any offers whatsoever from any interest from any party on this property?
There were a few interests on just our property, I think, I don't know if it was prior to listing or maybe right after listing that they brought forward, but I don't believe in, and people who are here longer than me are going to have to answer that, that there has been an offer since, well, an offer for the entire piece.
There has been.
I don't believe so.
Oh, you don't, okay, not, okay.
There weren't any specific offers? There were, there was some interest by a couple parties throughout the time, but there were no offers on it?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
The other thing that I would do is I would, with this listing agreement, I mean, it doesn't have to be sold with those other properties, and I would make sure that Newman Grubb Pfefferly understand that our property could be sold individually as well, that they're not holding out. I don't think they are.
Alderman Sivnik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move for the recommendations from staff to add the additional year to Newman Grubb and Pfefferly.
There's a motion and a second. I'm not sure who the second was. Alderman Kruger, okay. Is there further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. So do we have to add any language in there that says that we don't want a binding in case someone comes along and says, I want that section of property, but not the rest?
No, we wouldn't need to add anything. It's not, it's not binding.
Okay.
Seeing no, Alderman Taylor?
I think at this time, we need to take a different action on this and maybe employ a different real estate company. They certainly had their chance at it and some other fine companies out there, and I would like to see us go after a different real estate agent.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Whoops, you're not ready yet? Okay. Now we're ready.
Motion carried on roll call seven one.
Item eight is the Fox River Kayak Company lease. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger? Whoops, I'm sorry, we have to wait till Debbie presses the right button. Okay, Alderman Kruger?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve the Fox River Kayak Company lease.
Is there a second? It's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols? Whoops, did you not, are you up, Becky?
I'm, I'm here.
I'm sorry, Alderman Nichols, go ahead.
I'm not sure how the motion relates to what's in the memo. The memo says that Alderman Kruger recommends the administration committee forward this lease to the common council.
I see it. Originally, this was going to be on the common council, I mean, on the administration committee agenda, and Alderman Kruger and I agreed that we could just bring it straightforward to the council and move forward on this. So the, actually, the memo probably doesn't relate anymore. Are you finished?
We had fairly lengthy discussion at an admin committee meeting back in June that went on for about 50 minutes. I watched the video again today. It was made very clear to me that the duties of the park board were, are clearly laid out by state law, and everything that was done abides with the law. I don't see any reason for the common council to be taking any sort of action on this. And in the meantime, we have a company who has been providing a recreational service to members of our community, to members of the greater Fox Valley community, a company that has brought people and visitors to our downtown to spend money at our local businesses, and a company that has provided invaluable positive marketing for our community. And for us to be questioning and constantly rehashing business that has been completed is really detrimental to our city's image and reputation.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. This is exactly what we are trying to avoid. There are many reasons why this is brought before the council, and it was agreed to be brought before the council because it is a lease. We brought it forward figuring to lay it to rest, no more ugly debates on this, just vote on it. It was very simple, bring it forward, have the council vote on it, move forward. Unless there's any other discussion, I'm not going to get into the reasons why. The emails that were batted back and forth in the last week on this, it is simple. It's a lease, comes before the council. We wanted it to be simple, clear cut, come before the council, vote on it, be done with it. No more arguments, and have it done right. That was it. And I encourage everybody just to vote this through. No one's trying to besmirch any company. No one's against any company involved with the lease. It was a matter of procedure that we wanted to make sure it was done correctly. That was all.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who wrote the lease agreement?
The lease agreement was drafted by the city attorney, I believe, correct?
I didn't hear the last part.
It was drafted by the city attorney and, who did you say was the other party? Oh, the, the company that it's for. So the city attorney and the Fox River Kayaking Company.
Okay. The reason we're here tonight has nothing to do with the kayak company. It's a great company, they're doing fine. It has nothing to do with them. We don't even need to go down that street and upset the culture. What's detrimental is the way this administration operates solo.
Alderman Taylor, I, this was signed with the agreement of the city attorney and the park board. It was not something, it was solo. When tonight we're discussing the lease, we're not discussing about how we got here.
And that's why I'm putting this all together, Mayor, about the lease. What do we do to the item seven that we just got done with, with a piece of land by the city? The citizens, the taxpayers, through the common council, control the sale
And we're not discussing, Alderman Taylor.
Or lease of city property.
We're not discussing how the process works. We're discussing if you either want to approve it or not.
Apparently you don't know how the process works, Mayor. That's why we're here, and that's why we have this problem tonight and back in June, because you operate without this council's approval of these documents. And the park board, it's not in there.
And we have a disagreement on that. The attorney and I discussed this, and I also discussed it with Alderman Kruger to bring it forward, to put an end to this. I do not agree it needs to come to the council, but in the interest of the good of the community, I agreed to put it on the agenda so it could be voted on and we could move forward. And I think we need to move forward at this point.
Well, let me ask you this then. As this body to protect the citizens in liability and other cases, if this just goes through the park board, how do we know that the proper insurance is for them operating a company like this out of our building? How do we know that we're even covered properly?
I would, I would have you look at item eight, shall indemnify and hold harmless the city of Manasha, and shall show that they have liability insurance sufficient in an amount deemed accessible by the city's risk manager. So.
Well, certainly, you guys call it a permit, and what are we seeing here tonight? Fox River Kayak Company lease. It's not a permit. It's not like renting a pavilion at the park under the park board's supervision, and we have to approve those rates every year. This is a violation of this, of the city's laws, Mayor. Like it or not, that's the way it is, and you guys got caught. And you shouldn't be bypassing this council.
And that is not true. And, yes, Alderman Zalinski?
Did you want to say something?
No, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Okay. I just want, one remark on how it got here. I don't want to go against the, I was a part of the committee for the parks at this time. When I was coming through, I was only available for one of the meetings, the other one I was sick. But it was to the park board's realization that they had all authority to grant this lease, and I don't want them to seem like they're, they're the bad victim in this, because they didn't, they asked the city attorney and she approved that they could take full custody of signing this lease over with the mayor. So I don't want to put anything against them, but as far as the lease went, discussions that were prior to this in the park board was, it's only for a year for a reason to see, test the waters, to say how this goes forward. And there was concerns about only being a $700 rental fee, but this was just for a year. So it's not, like, it's not going to come forward again and the prices can go up. And I still think that we're covered under this lease, and that was another concern in the park board. So it's not like it didn't get shoved right down the pipe. That's just how it went. But I, I'm in support of this as far as it's still, it is still the one-year lease, and I think it's good for our community. Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. It says up there, the kayak company lease amend. Is this amended in any way, or is this?
No. So, so, so the way this system works is if, is Debbie has to program in all of these motions in order to bring this forward in the evening. So she includes some things just in case there are amendments to some things, so that there's a place for her to record the vote. So that's item eight A, basically, in case someone did wish to amend it. But no, this has not been amended in any way.
Yeah. The other question was that if, by some strange event, this did not pass, nothing would happen, correct? The lease is still the lease, and that'd be it, right? I think that what this does is it just, just kind of lays the groundwork to say that we really need to run this by the council, and that was the intent, and it really doesn't change anything. So, so, yeah, I'll be voting for this, but it's just unfortunate that we got to this point. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
I think my question is similar to Alderman Benner's, and it's for Attorney Captain. What impact would tonight's vote have on the current lease and any others moving forward?
I'm going to answer as well as I'll allow the attorney to answer, but I think it would be very bad, a very, it would show bad faith on the city's part to not approve this. It would also not be good for the kayak company in general to say that we don't want them here. I would not take a stand to vote against this on principle. I would move it forward and move on at this point. Saying no because of principle is not a good thing for this company. It's not a good thing for our community. This company has been promoting our community relentlessly and done a very good job bringing people to our community. I would hate to give them the impression that we don't want them here. Did you want to comment as well, Attorney Captain?
There would be no effect. What a vote does is it gives an interest in real estate to the company that currently does not have an interest in the real estate. It has, you know, a lease is an interest in real estate, a leasehold interest. After the last administration meeting, when this was discussed, the following day, the clerk mentioned something to me, and she said, you know, I think maybe the problem that the council has with this document is that it was signed by the mayor and the, and the clerk. And I said, oh, yeah, that would be a problem. I normally draft the bodies of documents and forward the rest of it on to be put together by others. And this was, you know, a draft document that I had and prepared it and sent it on. Didn't even notice that the mayor and the clerk signed it. And normally, I would have had the chair of the park board or either the park director, because there is authority for the park board to allow, what is it called? To allow exclusive use of a park facility on terms and conditions that are in, determined by the park board. And the only requirement is that there be some kind of insurance and indemnification provision or something like that. So really, that's what this is. The council approves it, that's fine. It doesn't hurt anything.
It doesn't hurt anything. Would it change anything that's already occurred or have possible impacts on future negotiations?
Oops, I'm sorry. The attorney can't really answer if it will have an impact on future negotiations, but I guess you have her opinion at this point.
I do, and I have yours, too. And after taking a deep breath, I will vote in favor of this. But with many reservations, because this action by the common council, I lost my train of thought here. This action by the common council, it, I really lost it, wow. It undermines the authority and the ability of the park board to manage our park lands. And the park board acted within their authority. They went through the proper channels and had their questions answered.
Let's stick on the current lease rather than the process. So.
And to, for the common council to undermine the process and authority, it reflects poorly on our on our community and sends a bad message to people to promote Manasha, people looking to provide recreational opportunities, people looking to develop or open a business in Manasha.
Alderman Zalinski? What's your point of order, Alderman Zalinski? I don't know if I can turn your mic on or not. Okay.
We're talking about the process again.
I agree.
I think we've went through the process, now let's talk about the lease.
Okay. I would agree, the point of order is valid. Thank you, Alderman Nichols. Did you want to still speak, Alderman Zalinski? You were on a minute ago, so, whoops, I turned you on and cut you off, sorry.
Yes, I don't know if this is talking about the process again, but will it come forward to council again after the year?
It would.
It would come.
It would come back, well, I would assume it would come back, but yes. Alderman Kruger?
I'll thank you, Mayor. I just want to make something really clear. This is something that was agreed upon between myself and the mayor to do this, to get it all done with. There were snafus in it, there were obvious snafus, and those are actually being worked out right now to where the Park Department is going to be working on the ordinances to have fees set up for that building and stuff like that, but the Common Council's the correct place for leases to be approved. We tried to bring this forward just to quickly get it done with and not make a big deal out of it and move on. It didn't work.
Seeing no further discussion, except for someone discussed again. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's no question about the kayak company. Some people want to drag this into it, make us look bad again, but it has nothing to do with them, again.
Okay, are we discussing the process again, or are we discussing the lease?
Okay. Fees and rental, fees and rentals are, they come before this council.
No, Alderman Taylor, we just had this point of order, you need to discuss the lease.
Funny, what about this point of order, Mayor? You're select people, you'd ever call it, but you always call me on it, Mayor.
And Alderman Taylor, let's move forward.
Let's move forward.
Are you going to discuss the lease, or are we, okay, let's take a vote at this point. Could you open the voting, please? Whoops.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinances and resolutions. R-1717, do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-1717, a resolution approving the City of Manasha's liability insurance renewal through a Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company, otherwise known as CivMec, is introduced by the mayor and recommended by the Administration Committee.
Second.
It's a motion by Alderman Benner and a second by Alderman Taylor. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll, motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item two is Resolution 18, approving a property tax rescission. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner? Whoops, now I can, I'm getting a little ahead. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-1817, a resolution approving a property tax rescission for the Wisconsin Department of Transportation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Got to turn off the vote. There we go. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make the motion to approve Resolution R-1917, a resolution approving a property tax refund for 1044 Lugano Street.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Did you get the motion? Okay. Are you ready?
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item M is claims against the city. The first item is Scott Klavers versus Cities Mutual, Cities and Villages Mutual. There is a memo that that case has been settled, no action is required. Item two is a motion is in order for the Common Council to issue a formal notice of disallowance for the claim by Perkin Insurance regarding 850 Racine Street. Attorney Captain, did you want to comment on this first?
I set forth in the memo that we had received correspondence from Pekin Insurance in regards to water damage at 850 Racine Street, which is Primitive Gatherings LLC. And last August, the state was doing some roadwork and sewer work in front of that business, and damage occurred to the lateral. And I believe that the state contractor, which is Michael's Corporation, is the contractor that damaged the sewer line. I did send correspondence, well, and what they're asking for is approximately $40,000 in losses that were incurred as a result of damages. And I did send correspondence to Pekin Insurance, telling them that it was a state project, not a city project. We did have some city staff on-site on occasion, and in fact, when this had occurred, there was a discussion between a representative from Michael's Corporation, from the state, the person who was on-site, one of our staff, and I don't know if anyone else was present, the owner, I believe, of the business as well. And Michael's indicated that they were going to take care of it, they were going to fix the problem that did not occur. I did, upon receiving this, did indicate to Pekin Insurance to whom they should direct their attention to, and also notified them that according to statutory requirements under 89380, that they were supposed to have given us a notice of circumstances, and we're long past that at this point. Well, and I did forward everything on to CivMec. At this point, I'm requesting that the Common Council deny the claim formally, and then that we'll get the notice off to them, and then that sets the time clock. They have four months within which to, or six months, excuse me, within which to decide what it is they're going to do about the claim.
Do we have a motion at this point? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make the motion to issue a formal notice of disallowance for the claim for Perkin Insurance regarding 850 Racine Street, and that they be advised of their statutory rights pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 893.80.
Is there? There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we, are you ready? Could we have a roll call vote, please? You're ahead of me. Alex.
Motion carried on roll call eight zero.
Item three is, actually, item two on the memo, Jerome Stephen and Hozel claim regarding the Lily O'Connell case. Attorney Captain? And yours won't go on by itself for some reason.
Thank you. I am just providing this information to the Common Council because we did receive an amended complaint in a case that is currently in Winnebago County Circuit Court between plaintiff Lily O'Connell, who resides at 816 Arthur Street, and Jerry Jan and Steve Hetzel? Hozel? What is it? Hozell? Thank you. Hozell? And that, I'm trying to think of when this one started. This one started a while ago. We had received on March 17, a notice of circumstances giving rise to a claim from the Hozels attorneys, that's the defendants in the particular case. We did not take any action, I did not bring it to the Common Council because there was no formal claim. There, if you'll recall, there are two things that have to be provided. The first is a notice of the circumstances surrounding the claim, and then the second thing is an itemization of the damages that you're asking for. And what we received was, well, if we lose this lawsuit to whatever amount that's going to be up to $50,000, that's what you should pay us. That's not a claim. So, it was not brought forth to the Common Council to take any action on. They waited for 120 days, and they are trying to bring us in as a third-party defendant. They also have a couple of other defendants that they are bringing in to the lawsuit. CivMec was informed of it when we first received it, they're informed of it now, and as you're aware, when there is a lawsuit, we do turn the claim over to CivMec. They did appoint an attorney, and he will be representing the city. And no council action is required or requested this time.
And we'll move on to item N, is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda this evening. Did you want to comment, Dick?
I do.
Okay.
Chairman of the Park Board. Appreciate the affirmative vote, but I would remind you that we're all on the same team here. I did everything in my power to play by the rules. I'm wondering, are we really together on this? Wow. I don't get it, guys.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, do we have a motion to recess to the committees? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to recess to committees.
Is there a second? Alderman Gray, all those in favor? Opposed? We stand at recess, don't leave too long.